Right, it's 6:30. We'll go ahead and call our meeting in the session. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, which is our republic which stands united under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes or additions to the agenda? Now we have one more resignation to add, Corey Smith Guidance Counselor at the high school. Any other changes? Or additions? All of those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any announcements or recognitions? There are none. Next, we have citizens' comments. This is the time for the public to address the board. We may not respond with questions, but we'll hear your concerns. Are there any citizens' comments? If you're at home remotely, you can use the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Looks like a hand that I will call on you, or if you're in person, I will call on you if you can just announce your name when you are called on to speak. Any citizens' comments? Seems none. We move on in our agenda. So next, we have our consent agenda. So we have the minutes of our regular meeting on February 3rd, reorg meeting of March 5th, and the emergency meeting of March 11th, as well as the financial warrants. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Steve made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You seconded any discussion around those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have field trip requests. So first, we have an RMS field trip request from both library and guidance.
Sure, yeah. So I have two field trip requests, and then one is the library. I think Ms. Baldwin probably put enough information in there. Again, we've been kind of focused on trying to get kids out into the world to learn, kind of, learning the light. And so that's why she is looking to match the field trip of book study they're doing. And I'll wait on the next one.
Okay. Motion to approve the book study trip to the Mystic Aquarium. Steve made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Just seconded. Any discussion around that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is another Riverside field trip request for the eighth grade team and sports staff to go to Colby-Sawery College.
Yep, so this is our annual college visit. It goes with kind of the career college exploration stuff we do with our eighth grade. It must be SAC-funded.
Is there a motion to approve the college visit?
Still moved.
Denise made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just seconded. Any further discussion around the field trip request? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on field trip requests, we have all-for-one field trip requests of the Franklin Zoo and the Basketball Hall of Fame, and Tammy's online.
Hi, yes, these are two field trips for our April break. The first trip is to the Franklin Park Zoo in Boston for the kindergarten to eighth grade students, and the second is for the Basketball Hall of Fame to Springfield, Mass. For the kindergarten, or the third to eighth grade students.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the two all-for-one requests over April break? Steve made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Just seconded. Any further discussion around the field trip requests? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Okay, next on field trip requests, we have a Springfield High School trip proposal from Mr. Levinsey for Thailand and Japan.
Hi, nice to be back in front of you again. I was bringing these to you. We had such a great response from the students and teachers and countless community members about this trip to Japan and our trip to Spain. And I wanted to see if I could get approval to gauge interest in another round of trips. And so what I did was I went both to the student council and to my China, Korea, Japan class and asked them a couple different options, and they were super excited about the Thailand, Cambodia, Vietnam, tying in with curriculum and places of quite a bit of interest. And I also talked with Mr. Gray and the tech center and the robotics trip to Japan. So when they were doing the eighth grade tour of the high school, I would say 20 or plus students approached me, and are you the teacher that's leading the trip to Japan? Can we, you know, sign up to go on a future one? And so I wanted to see if I could get authorization to go ahead and see what interest is out there for these two trips. And depending on which one has the most, or if there's enough for both, then I think working with a few people, we could make them both happen. They're very different. The one to Japan, the robotics engineering cities of the future, very STEM-oriented. They're like, stay primarily in a couple locations and very engineering-focused. And the Thailand, Vietnam, Cambodia is a little bit different and culturally-based, looking at some historic sites from the war. We go to the anchor temples in Cambodia and then spend a little time in Thailand as well. So I was asking for approval to gauge interest and then come back with you and let you know kind of the next steps if that, whatever we find.
I love you. I'm very happy.
I think it's fantastic.
Paperwork states, why this is fantastic.
Pardon me?
The paperwork, that supply itself is fantastic. Thank you, thank you.
So do we just want to make a formal motion for Mr. Levinsey to explore trips to either Thailand and/or Japan? It's next, for next school year?
Yes.
Next school year? And then depending on interest, it would come back to the board for approval?
Yeah. So moved.
You made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to, on the paperwork, I thought it said one of them was for 2027. Are you looking at possibly multi-years, or are you looking at both of them for next year? I guess I was-
Both of them for next year, but I'm hoping that depending on how they go, I'd like to flip-flop with Ms. Allen so we're not co-fundraising at the same time. So I'd like to alternate it. So I was looking for some options. What could, if we can do something this year, would be great. And then she could, she's kind of two years out planning for Spain, so it wouldn't compete with each other as much.
Any motions on the table? All those in favor? You named them. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Hey, good luck in your travels, Tucker.
Yeah, 24 days before we leave. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the FY '26 school calendar.
So in your packet, you've got two versions. Option one is the traditional calendar that Springfield has done for a number of years prior to this year. No longer has the early release Thursdays, but it goes back to a number of half-days. Friday half-days. And the second option is more aligned with the state and the tech center. We are required by law to have a conversation with the tech center and to align as best we can. Option two does that. Administration is preferring option one. And we have a number of them here. They should speak to their reasons why they would prefer that. But it's on the table for discussion. The board does need to choose a calendar, set a calendar. Doesn't have to be today, so if there's questions or concerns you have over one or the other or both, we have time to go back, talk about it, tweak them. But I forget how many, I mean, we had four or five different variations throughout the last couple of months. And these are the two that we have currently ran.
Any questions? Yes.
My Jets.
Steve?
I'm for the no early release and no half-days. Because what I'm getting about half-days is teachers have them half-day, and it's really useless day for, especially for younger kids. So, and I remember when we didn't have half-days and we didn't have the early releases. So I would be, I would be for the no early releases and no half-days. Option two. That'll be my choice.
Jess, you have a question?
Option two. So neither option has an early release on Thursdays?
Correct.
I think I misunderstood then. Can you say again, administrators are preferring option one?
Yeah, it looks like Nate's gonna come and give you specifics of why.
I'm saying, I-
I could speak to it if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, Nate, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I mean-
Probably had to sit down and start working.
And look, you're at a feedback people also, which is unkind. Yeah, so what we're, what we're trying to do is be responsive to parents, right? Because it is hard, right, when any deviation in the schedule, right, creates hardship where we're at. I do think, and I can't speak to the younger grades, but I know Tammy having the space open, I believe, has helped as far as the childcare and helping parents with where their kids go. What we're looking for is timely time, right? So when we are doing things like looking at data and trying to adjust practices, right, it doesn't really work to do that at the very beginning of the year, right, when most of those in-service days are loaded. So that's most of what we're doing in that time, is we're looking at, we're looking at ready data. We're trying to kind of adjust for those things. We're looking at behavior data. We're anticipating parts of the year where you have behavior spikes, right, which we know. And trying to kind of adapt and be proactive about that. That's why some time, I think, is important. We're also very cognizant that it is, it's hard on families, right, when you have those weird days. One of the, one thing that I know we pushed for was to maximize five, five-day weeks. They're better for kids, right? Kids are in, get in the way, they're much better for kids. You see it in behavior. You see kids engaged more in five-days weeks, five-day weeks, and that's really, really important.
So I guess help me understand, when we went to the Thursday early release, it was taking the place of the once-a-month half-day for professional development? So if we get rid of those, is, when, are those professional development days built in somewhere else?
Yes. You're on option two?
There's still ten professional development days in the schedule. That's contractually what there is.
They're on, I believe, November 10th would be one of them. And-
I'm joining. Takes me a minute to get, yeah.
So through the CBA, the contract, sorry, there are 10 days that are professional developments for teachers. So right off the bat, that includes the first district day. So when we start school, there's usually like four or five that are used for the beginning, which then doesn't leave us very many throughout the school year. So what's also included is our parent-teacher conferences. Those are also considered professional development days. So by the time you look at when can buildings work on PD and the things that they need to do in their buildings, it doesn't give us a lot of time. So we understood that the every Thursday was really difficult for families and the community around, you know, like we said, where are our kids going, et cetera. But we also knew the necessity of, we need time in our buildings, and a Tuesday for 45 minutes or an hour is not enough time. We're still working on the CBE, the Community-Based Education Initiative. That takes time. And when you're trying to work on it at a 45-minute, once a week, or an hour once a week, there's just not enough time to do that. So at least at the high school level, because I don't have teams. So I have, I'm trying to get, you know, I have multiple people who teach ninth. I have one person who teaches 10th. So I'm trying to figure out ways to support them. And we figured that by having an early release at least once a month, we could really spend time and devote to getting that work done. Because otherwise, I'm not sure where that's going to happen. I know that in the past, we've used some summer curriculum work and due to budget constraints, et cetera, that hasn't been available, and that's not something that we can always bank on. And so it was like, how can we do this and still move this initiative forward? Because I think we're seeing some really positives coming out of this so far, that we want to stay with that momentum. And once a week on a Tuesday, to me, it's just not enough time contractually to balance that. So that was my thought process, at least for the high school, why at least once a month, having an early release, we would hope wouldn't be as much of a hardship on our families, but yet we could also spend time on this valuable work.
I think next year, at least for Riverside, right, when we're transitioning grades, it's gonna be, that's gonna be a lift, a big lift, right? And we're gonna do some of that work upfront, right, on, by tuning curriculum work. We're gonna start meeting with the fifth grade team in April. But that's, that's, we're gonna need time, time to make sure that that is playing out. And just for those folks as well.
So those half-days staff would still be here through the normal school, right? Yep. And then you mentioned option two aligns more with the tech center versus option one. What are implications if we go with option one, which was like-
So currently, I mean, tech center holds their classes. So unless our students have a major transportation issue, you know, the kids are excused if they can't make it. But for the most part, our kids currently stay there, and it's usually level two, which tends to be our seniors.
So more like on those half-days is where that implication would be?
Yep. So level one would still meet in the morning, and we would create a schedule, which we have done, to accommodate them. And then level two tends to be the seniors, which already have either driving themselves or their friends can do transportation. So I don't think that there's been, I mean, I mean, I don't, I see most of our kids want to be at the tech center, and that's, you know, that's what they enjoy, so they find out a way to get there. If it was, if I was looking at more sophomores and juniors, I might have concern because of transportation. But usually, our seniors are giving each other rides or what have you, so.
I have a couple of concerns. The ones that back up for Fridays against, I mean, like, you know, my kids are old. I've been around. Like, I know that student and staff attendance have been historically low, and I know that sometimes behaviors have been really off. So I, like, if we're putting half-days back in, I'd be really interested in seeing what the attendance and behavior data looks like over the next year with going back to this, simply because, you know, like, I remember. And I remember that instruction didn't really happen in the mornings. Like, that was a pajama day with a movie. And we're at a point with our scores that I'm really fearful of losing instruction time. I totally, I'm hearing what you, that you need the half-days for building PD and building initiatives. I'm really supportive of that, but I do worry about Fridays, and I do worry about, you know, this is, this is a free day.
Were any other days explored other than Fridays?
Well, what we were trying to do is maximize five-day weeks, right? And that was, because we do see the impact of five-day weeks versus shorter weeks. And that's what, that's what honestly what we were trying, yeah.
Is there any reason we can't take some of the 10, 10 and utilize them differently? That you can, the administration can utilize some of those professional development days? Because I would be in favor of doing something like that versus having kids, you know, being off all the time on Fridays. And the professional development's already built in, so let's just give them a couple days a year to work on that kind of stuff. And I've been in the system, so I know the game. That would be my suggestion. I would do that. Because a lot of professional development we get, a lot of times staffers have had it, and it's a waste. And they'll tell you that. So I prefer it being used constructively versus, you know, that's just my, my opinion.
I think also part of that is, is that by at least having one once a month, it gave teachers also time to implement and collect some data and then bring it back. Sometimes with just, you know, the way that the 10 days play out over the year, they're all done in January. So it's like, okay, what do we do, February, March, April, and May, which are pretty booming months? You know, we also have Cogniand. We have a bunch of other things that are happening. So it was kind of, you know, how do we collectively spread those out and make sure that teachers are having time to try the things that they're doing and then bring that back to have a conversation with their peers? And I think you had said something about staff extending the can't part of the CBA. So if there's a holiday, et cetera, there's gotta be-
Look, I'm not-
Permission from somebody higher up than me?
What I'm saying is, you know what I'm saying as far as-
Yep.
We can adjust our professional development days to, even if it's half the professional development days go-
Like we split them half, district billing?
And the other half, like they do the beginning, the first day, the district. I have no problem doing that, but I, I'm having problems looking at distancing Fridays and Thursdays, you know, that kind of thing off. And like someone said, you know, we've got score issues. Let's utilize that time for that and not have them. That's just my take.
Nate, can you explain around the five-day weeks?
Oh, just-
Try not to disrupt, as many weeks.
When you have a full week, right, behaviors are better, right? And you see the pattern with kids versus three-day weeks. And so kids are way more focused on a five-day week. And that has always been our, sort of our, the more five-day, right, maximize it five-day pieces. You can tell, short weeks are like long weeks, right, in the building, and long weeks have way better flow, too, huh? And, right, kids get into their team, they're there. That's all about maximizing. Longer, longer weeks are better.
Can I ask a naive question? Is it possible to do a full day every other month instead of a half-day every month? I don't, I-
Yeah, I don't.
I think it extends the school year to 75.
I think the real question, right, is also that, and you would know this, right? I thought the state was sort of pushing to go to the statewide calendar, and we have some flexibility, and we don't have flexibility like we used to, right? Am I wrong? That was sort of my understanding.
No, you're right. I mean, I mean, there's actually a bill in the legislature to require a statewide. We're not there yet. This doesn't have to do that. You know, but I, my, and I don't know if we did. I don't think we did, because I came into this halfway through, so I don't know what happened before me. But if Fridays are a problem, what about half-day Wednesdays?
Well, that was gonna be my question tonight, because you said five-day weeks were more productive for students, but if you, if we segregate in the middle of the week.
To be honest, it's one of the reasons we went through a little bit, how the Thursdays played out, is because they kind of disrupt the student of the week, in the middle of the week. I mean, we build our schedule around it, right? So when we have them on Fridays, right, we have like our green light or whatever, right, alternates on those Fridays. So they, right, kids are, we build our schedule to match it. And so, yeah, of course, you're speaking of a Wednesday. We, I haven't seen at Riverside, I guess, to other places, like that I can sort of, I don't, right, teachers not showing up, because we have. We also focus on, you know, we have our Friday assemblies. We try to aim those at those days. So those big cultural things that we do anyways, right, we use them during that truncated schedule. That's what we do in our building. I'm not, it doesn't have to be Fridays. It could, it could be a Monday. You know, it could be, it could be a Wednesday, right? Where just, the less disruption is during the week, is accurate. We find plays out, right? You can see it. You can see it in short weeks and the data, like behavior data, you can see it.
I also think we, again, Elena and Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know who just gave the suggestion. I apologize, but I don't think we looked into, and I don't know if we can, lessen the days in August and give you that every other month. I don't know if that would look at it. I guess we can go back and think about it, look at it.
We did look at that, and by doing that, it goes against the state calendar.
Oh, good point. Yeah, yeah, good point.
I do. So your five-day weeks, is a Friday easier because it starts the day? You know, to get your four plus your half, as far as a half a day versus a Monday? Because you have a half a day and then you don't, and then you have your four full days? I'm just trying to think. You're talking about trying to get your best use out of a full week?
I'm not, I'm not.
So-
I guess from my perspective, I'm not, right, and we, right, and they, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that-
I just didn't know if that made a difference. Because some of these, I mean, you have them on a Friday before a week off, but that would technically be a full week, just minus the half a day, the week before. So I'm just trying to get some understanding about that.
No, I'm not sure that matters, whether it's Monday or Friday. I can build the schedule to match.
I was just thinking disruption-wise, if that was another concern.
Families aren't, you know, families aren't gonna show up. They're not gonna show up whether it's Friday or Monday, right?
Right. And then is, my second question is, is the professional development a requirement? So if it's on a Friday before a week of vacation, they are technically required to be there?
And they can't extend a holiday without permission from the superintendent?
I see.
So there has to be a valid, the superintendent has to get that.
I see, okay.
With the exception, right, is traditionally, the district is always given that December has a half-day, general staff. That would be the, that's the only exception.
Well, and that's, I was actually gonna ask about that. So that's not, that's not a professional development day. That's-
Traditionally, that is, I'm not saying you're beholden to that.
Right, yeah.
But the half a day before February vacation, the half a day before April vacation?
All the others except for the December one. Okay.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, those would all require, those would all require permission from the superintendent.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Great.
I just wanted to thank you guys for trying to find, get rid of this Thursday early release as the dysregulation that you guys are talking about extends to the home, especially with children who have like ADHD and stuff like that. Because, you know, children with ADHD and adults with ADHD function or don't function based on scheduling. And if something knocks that scheduling off, the kids just spiral everywhere. And getting them back on track is just almost impossible. And the dysregulation that occurs in my household because- And the dysregulation that occurs in my household because of those Thursday early releases has been hell. So, thank you, and please approve it.
Okay, any other discussions, comments from the board?
Here's, I I don't know, I'm I'm thinking, what if we do try some Mondays and some Fridays? And see what the the data shows at the end of the year? Between attendance and behaviors, if there's a significant difference, that way. I mean, we know the schedule, it's, you know, we're not looking at anything that's gonna happen with any regularity, so that. You know, it, the schedule will come out shortly and people can plan around it. I'm just.
I wanna go one step higher. I'd like to see a couple of PD days be split, the ones that you can't use for half days because you're busy. Split a couple of PD days so that half is district and half is. If we, if you could come back with a calendar like that, something like that, I'd be interested in in.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, when they, we have ten professional development days.
Yes, that part I know, yes.
So those professional development days, half, half is for district, whatever they want to do, district. The other half is for the the buildings. That gives a building's chance to work on what they have to do with their staff.
So built in initiatives.
Typically, they have, these are the release our building, where, in the building.
Right, but we've never had it really built into the schedule. So if we build it into the schedule, that half a day is district PD, and the other half is building administrators PD. You can deal with your stuff with your staff that half day be morning, afternoon, whatever. I'd like to see a schedule built into that.
And I think, I mean, Alina builds a schedule and, uh, you know, this year was probably the most detailed that we've had in a while, I think. It would be the person that would be.
Yes, so if I could speak, um, that's okay. So when we were kind of going through all these calendars and looking at taking away the half days, um, we did put out to the administrators, hey, instead of me building a full schedule, let's split it. But even with me splitting it, it does make it difficult, not not on my end. But because we have parent teacher conferences, we can't count that day and a half, because that day and a half really is for our support staff. Um, and we have, you know, four of those, right, or, you know, three technically. And the beginning of the year, we already split between district and um, building. So that doesn't give us very many days to split and have it, and I'm more than happy to split it because I love setting up the schedule and looking at needs and getting the feedback. So that part is totally okay, but it still doesn't give a lot of time and kind of like what Bindi said, we're done in January with those PD days. How do we support our teachers towards the end of the year? And how do we build that in? So maybe kind of truncating some of that and looking at, can we have a couple of half days towards the end of the year? And still splitting some of those other PD days? I don't know, I'm just thinking outside the box right now.
And it's definitely happened to PD days two, three in a row, split them up, put a couple in the end. You know, like, you know, just example, November, you have the twenty fourth and twenty fifth.
Parent teacher conferences.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah.
But but still, there's other ones and just, you know, maybe put one or two toward the end. You know, um, that's why I said come back with a different schedule, see if we can work out something. Because more time we have the kids in school, the better.
Yeah, there's definitely.
And and I remember when we didn't have the the half days and we didn't have. So it it can work without those, those were built in under Zach.
So what I'm hearing, your charge to correct. Um, is that, well, what I'm hearing is come back with moving these around a little bit with what we can to to limit dysregulation, right? Or or improve regulation, right? To make sure that it uh, and still uh, sort of match when we have those timely needs, right? We have to have that before August, which has gotten longer and longer as the state changes that um, that everybody has to sign off on and. Uh, like, uh, so, right, which is coming up for us. Um, but um, so to, so we have that time, but thinking about if there is flexibility in those uh.
Yeah.
Those full days, which I, what I'm hearing from the state calendars, there isn't. But uh, but I am not, and I'm not at that that state level yet, that we can't move those around because they're except for three, three districts didn't adopt it, everybody else is lined up.
Option two matches.
Right, and then the other districts have their.
The four days at the beginning, Steve, are what, Steve, the state is all only that now.
So that would be different, right? We always before, Steve, we knew exactly what you're describing, right?
Is it mandated by the state?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's not mandated, I don't wanna hear about it. When it's mandated, then we'll we'll deal with it.
I think what the thing that is mandated, right, is the text and our alignment.
Yeah, that's always.
I still think the days at the start of the year set your year for.
Oh, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just saying, come back with a schedule where some.
I'm glad that Nate heard something, I guess I'd heard something too, but I haven't yet landed whether I'm doing half days or full days. Because I'm.
Can't do full days because it goes against the collective bargaining.
Against the bargain.
Well, pushes the calendar. Now, what, if the start.
Option two is the full days.
Yeah, option two is full days.
That uh, aligns with the state and the collective bargaining agreement.
So where are the PD days in option two, maybe I missed that?
October fourteenth, well, the four at the beginning in August, there's one October fourteenth, there's one November tenth, there's one January twentieth. That might be.
And then it should be one in March for.
Right, well, the March was the parent conference.
Yeah, March is the parent conference and then, so teachers also, what gets included in that, sorry, which I forgot to add, is that um, teacher get, the teachers get a prep day at the beginning of the year and then they get a day at the end of the year so that they can do those things. So there's two there. And if you add parent teacher conferences, there's four. So now you're looking at six and it's like, how do you, you know, kind of divide that up when you also have four, you know, three or four at the beginning?
That was you too.
Yeah, you know, so it's like, how do you balance that? And I don't disagree, like, you know, how, you know, look at the full days that you have and how you break that up. But at the same time, it's like, we're done in January, so now.
January to January is just too long.
Yeah.
To go without some being able to readjust if things are going off the rails, I.
See, the other, the other thing that I think is different, uh, at least I I feel like the last four years is the number of required trainings they have to have before kids walk in. Uh, just the amount of hours that were, we, I mean, it used to be just bloodwork pathogens and and, right, egress. Uh, and that is not a longer true. Uh, I actually, there was eight hours this year of just just mandatory training support.
Not for everybody, even if they're already gone through it.
That's correct, everybody in the building, everybody in every building. Um, which is done, that's correct, it just eats up way more time than it used to, right? You used to do it at your first building day, you'd go through, you'd, the nurses come in, do bloodwork, pathogen, go over the allergies. Um, and and maybe go over the egress stuff, that's no longer the case. And that's been the last, probably, it's been actually last year's additions was way longer. Um, just because they they continue to add uh, for the state, it's it's, it wasn't actually kind of astounding how many hours.
I'd like them to come back with a different calendar that we can discuss. And then, you know, if this one works, okay, we'll go with this one, but try to shift a little around.
You're confused too.
Yeah.
Which which one?
Well, which one ever we pick.
I'm hearing half days are needed to get us through to June. If we go with the full days, which was our option, we're done in January. So it seems to me like.
Half days are a waste. It's it's a waste for students, it's a waste for parents, all right?
It's been several years since we've had them.
I know.
I like Denise's suggestion of the Monday and Friday.
I I picture us, we're gonna start, you're you're gonna have kids starting to get into the week on Monday and then starting to get into the week on Tuesday because they're thrown off from a Monday early release too. I was gonna say something about that, I don't, I don't love the idea of the half days. Personally, if you guys come back and say, hey, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, then. The Monday.
What can I say, that it does make me worried, right? Because you're setting a weird tone starting the the week. Uh, because, right, like, it is. Um, and I, I, and I can't speak for other buildings, right? But I don't find them as a waste because we do a lot of the cultural stuff. We're doing our big assemblies, our, which we do anyways, right? Because they're super important. Um, we line up our uh, like staffers, basketball game, those kind of things that are cultural building. That's what, that's what we put in like the half day that's coming up, that's what's happening.
I think I just worry that if you've got that on Monday, so you've got kids coming in on Monday.
It's a very different vibe.
Trying to get into the routine and then you have to do it all again on Tuesday.
It's a very different vibe than, you know.
What I would just, whereas Friday, you can do your cultural, you know, your community building on Friday and then they go home for the weekend and start again on Monday.
We can't walk out to the basketball games.
You can't speak.
I just wanna build off of like the idea of versus the Friday. And like, I got the idea of like switching it up, but when you have a half day on Monday, like Jess said, it's like those people that just don't come on that day because you're coming off of the weekend, you know? Nobody's gonna be there anyway, why am I gonna go, right? So then you have only half of the students showing up. And most of the time, it's the students that want to be at school, want to learn. And so those students are already ahead, they got an assignment, they've already done it. And then the next day when the kids come in, they didn't have their transportation, they weren't able to be there, they just didn't wanna be there. And they come in and they're behind, you're just putting them back a step. Whereas when we do Fridays, they, then you come in on Monday and those people aren't really that far ahead because sometimes it's like a catch up day, like, hey, you missed this assignment last week, like, you can catch up on this now or something like that. But another idea that I like as well, Rick said, was Wednesdays, where like, I get middle of the week. But I feel like students are more up to come in, even if they don't really wanna be there, because, oh, I might miss something, we're in the middle of a lesson, you know? We're gonna carry on from what we did, I don't quite understand what we're doing, maybe I should go in. But Mondays just don't sit right with, like, from a student's perspective.
Thank you.
I think the only other thing when you're looking at it, it jumps out at me, the November days, I don't love that because it looks like we're off one day and we only have half a day. Um, I know some other area, district, area schools actually take the whole week off of Thanksgiving, um, which is mind blowing to me. But I'd rather do that than have them come to school for half a day. Um, so if it's gonna fall that week, I just would wanna explore that too when you guys come back.
Yes, the November is, that.
It's tough.
It is a weird, the eleventh, we spent a long time on November as well, because, right, that Tuesday off is a, that's weird, right? Like, that's not a, that's not a normal coming. Right, no, I understand that, I just, it's, you don't, you're not used to, here, gone, then, that's not a normal pattern for schools.
Right.
So can I? Can we have some guidance that we're either on full days or half days? It sounds like we're gonna rework it anyway. I just don't know which one I'm reworking.
I I think half days, that's what I'm.
I think the administrators made the case of going from what January to June without professional development days is no time to correct and adjust anything.
Unless there's some hybrid of the two where you have a couple full days or, although that doesn't get you very many.
Keep in mind, if you add more PD days during the school year, it's gonna extend the school year. So you're gonna get out well after Father's Day.
That's great, just. So are we in consensus to come back with the calendar with half days?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Rework half days?
That looks different, how, what's the, like, I'm.
Well, there's two.
Mondays or.
There's two things with the half day calendar.
Yeah.
They're nearly, if not all, in advance of a break. I don't know, I may have some that's good for families and maybe it's not, I don't know. Um, so do we look at a different day? Or if we're gonna keep it on Friday, do we look at a different Friday that's not backed up against the break? I think those are probably your only options.
And I don't know, I I'd advocate for trying a couple different ways throughout the year? Like with that maybe some backed up and some not, and I just, just so we have a a broader.
I mean, if we can gauge attendance and engagement through that for the next calendar year, then we'd be better educated to move forward with the different calendar.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
But now's the time to start looking and making changes. I mean, we've had this for years, let's let's start making some changes. Let's get it so the students can actually learn and not be interrupted halfway through school days and stuff.
But on the flip side, I do want to make sure we can continue to implement the um, seat improvements and the the, all of that that we're trying to work through. If we don't have time for that, we're not gonna make any traction.
Exactly.
Well, just come back with a new schedule and we can discuss, that's all.
Ray.
Just one more thought, considering how unpopular the news for the Thursday early release has ended up being, maybe sending home a survey, asking the parents' opinions on this one? I mean, you don't have to, but just a thought.
I would look to administrators for that, I don't know.
I don't know.
I think we come back with our, what we believe works best for the the student population.
Okay. So we will, um, I know there's a, April seventh is pretty full. Um, so we'll do it at, we'll take a break. Fourteen, so we'll keep, we'll come back on the twenty first, but we've kinda gotta make a decision by now.
Yeah.
So that's what those two.
Just, I'm not advocating one way or the other. December twenty third, you want that as a half a day?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, that's fine.
They're twenty, and it, the twenty third of all day, I mean, like, kids are done. Yes.
Good to move on? Okay, and next under new business, we have capital project contracts. So first, you had Union Street epoxy flooring contract.
Yeah, so you've got the procurement documents in your um, packet. We had three bids, um, relatively wide ranging. Although all three are very experienced in the epoxy world. Vermont Protective Coatings came in forty thousand dollars round number. They're the low bid. We've got in the budget sixty five thousand for the project. Excuse me, administration um, asking you to approve the execution of that contract for take place this summer.
Is there a motion to approve the contract for the epoxy flooring at Union Street School? Steven, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jess, did you second it? Any discussion around the epoxy flooring contract? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we had Springfield High School VCT flooring contract.
Yeah, you approved a while back, maybe December, um, the asbestos abatement for the project. This is for the new tile to go down. Again, we we reached out to a number of contractors, we had three pre-qualified close bids. CNC Bliss, local company, was the low bidder. We worked with all three of the bidders in the past, we're comfortable with all three of them. We're comfortable with Bliss and um, we're recommending that you award that contract to Bliss for, again, the summer's work.
So we had budgeted a hundred and twenty five thousand, this comes in at approximately fifty five thousand.
Kind of, that hundred and twenty five was, we saved money on the asbestos as well, so that was a compounded budgetary number. But yes, um, you know, we're saving roughly fifty thousand dollars on the total flooring project.
Is there a motion to approve the contract to CNC Bliss Flooring of VTC Flooring at the high school? It's unlooked. Just made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jess seconded, any discussion around the flooring at the high school? Jess, seconded, any discussion around the flooring at the high school? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, next we have Springfield High School Window Replacement Change Order.
Yeah, so hopefully you recall last May, well, I probably have it in here somewhere, last May, um, you approved, uh, the replacement of five windows on what's called Sea Wing North on the west side of the, what I call the west side of the, um, wing. Through the supply chain issues, they weren't able to do that last summer, so it's scheduled for this summer. Um, we had to test the caulking of the windows, it came back positive for asbestos. So that first change order is for the asbestos abatement, uh, removing disposal of, of that, uh, waste product, hazardous waste product. And then change order, um, number two, and the amount of $212,000 is to finish that side of the wing. And then change order number three for 367 would be to do the entire east side of that wing, so that entire Sea Wing North would, um, be complete as far as all windows and doors are concerned, asbestos removal abatement. Um, we have the money in the capital fund, um, and we've got the contractor that, um, is size and ready and willing to be able to do this work. So, uh, we would request that you approve change orders one, two, three. If, if you don't approve change order one, we can't do the original contract. Um, but we would like change orders two and three also approved, so we can do that entire wing.
Okay, is there a motion to approve change orders one, two, and three?
Aye, a second.
Jess made the motion, is there a second? So, you've seconded, any discussion on this?
Just want to, for the public, confirm this is funded from our capital fund, this is something that we planned for.
Yep.
And we have budgeted for.
Yes, in the capital fund.
Thank you. And these are the windows that look like they're about to fall out?
Yes. They don't look like they're about to fall out, they are about to fall out.
Right, so there's like, I saw that there's not a whole lot of efficiency savings available, but.
Yeah.
There's safety concerns.
Yeah, you don't, you don't get a lot of efficiency out of windows. You're covered because you don't feel the draft and stuff anymore, but you don't, you don't get a whole lot of energy efficiency.
Right, but it's, I mean, saves us from somebody getting in or somebody falling out or.
This one was upkeep on the building, right? Like we're maintaining the building.
And that's what the voters approved, that the $100,000 reserve for. I mean, it wasn't specifically for this, but they have over the last two or three years approved that capital contribution for projects like this.
Further discussion, comments? Motion on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving on in our agenda, next we have staffing, so first we have a retirement, Bridgette Anderson, special educator at Elm Hill School. I think anybody's on.
Rachel's on.
Oh, she is. Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Bridgette has been an absolute asset to Elm this year, is our case manager for special education. Um, it's thoroughly helpful, she's been able to keep up on a lot, a lot of documents and keeping us in compliance, um, and really working with the teachers and staff, so we super appreciate her and we're sad to see her move on, um, but very appreciative of her service to our school and the district.
Thank you.
Can I just time off for one second?
Yeah.
I think this might be the first meeting you've attended, right Beth?
Yep.
Oh, so you've met everybody?
Maybe the first that you've spoken at, right?
Okay, yeah.
First one you've spoken at. Beth is our assistant principal up at Elm Hill, just so everybody knows.
Please.
Yeah, you can see here in the next room. Great, is there a motion to approve the retirement of Bridgette Anderson?
A second.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jess seconded, any further discussion?
Just wish her well in retirement. I have worked with her personally and it's been wonderful, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain.
Four ayes, one abstention. Okay, next up we have resignation, so first we have Ronald Boslin, K5 classroom teacher at Elm Hill.
Yes, um, so Ron, uh, will be leaving us this year, he's been a great asset, especially in the past month or two, um, doing a lot of outdoor classroom activities with Elm Hill students, which has been really awesome with the snow shoeing, um, and getting the kids outside, um, he relates really well with the kids and they love him or having him around. He's also been bouncing around the classrooms, doing a lot of our reading to students, which we know early literacy, um, is, we're having a huge push in the district and statewide, nationwide, so he's been in the classrooms and the library helping Ms. Laura out. Um, we're sad to see him go, but we definitely wish him the best and who knows, maybe he'll come around, you know, again at some point, but we wish him the best.
Thanks, Beth. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
A second.
Steven, the motion, is there a second?
One second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, next we have Nicole Smith, school psychologist for the district.
Hi. I'm sorry.
Yep, she is.
Can you speak to this one?
I can. I mean, I've worked with her some, I've just, she jumped right in, beginning of the year, she's been a good asset for us over at Riverside, really kind of picked up and, uh, done a lot of good work with kids and families, um, disappointed this year ago. That's, that's my, yeah, I Riverside, that's.
I think what I saw today was she's actually leaving the state or something.
Yes. Wish her well.
Wish her well. Is there a motion to accept Nicole's resignation?
A second.
Jess made the motion, is there a second?
I have a question about resignations, aside from the obvious statement, we're going to say, are exit interviews of any meaningful done and then that data presented as to why the person left? For instance, like, uh, you know, if they don't like the carpet tiles, or is that put into some sort of data that's then presented, like, hey, maybe there's other people who don't like the blue carpet tiles and prevent the smoke from leaving.
No, legitimate question, so we had, we did ask for exit interviews last year as part of the process, but I believe it was more of a Google forum than an actual, that I would consider an HR interview, so it's, that may be something for us to revamp.
I've had some in person and.
I see, thank you.
Okay. Jess made the motion for the resignation, I don't know if I got a second.
Yeah.
Jess seconded, any further discussion around that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next we had an additional resignation tonight, which was Cory Smith, the guidance counselor at the high school.
I'm sorry. Give me a second. Take me a little bit. Thank you. So it's for Cory, you said?
Yep.
Yes, so, um, Cory Smith has been, um, our counselor, I was trying to think back how many years and I can't even think, so she's been here for a certain third day and thinking. Um, and when she joined, I was the assistant principal and now the principal, um, she has been a great, you know, member of our community, um, without her master schedule, I don't even know how we would do half of those things that we do. Uh, she's been our director, um, and she's just been an asset and I think, you know, has been, you know, a, a great, um, support person for our students and just knows, you know, our system like the back of her hand, so it's going to be a huge loss, um, we do wish her all the best. Um, she has, uh, uh, made a decision that was really, really tough for her, uh, and is getting closer to her family and her kids are getting older as well, um, so she's going back to, uh, Falls Falls where, uh, she went to school, um, and lives like, I don't know, we can like throw a stone, I think, to the, to the school, so it's just, yeah, so it was a difficult decision for her to make and we do wish her all the best, so.
Thanks, Nicole. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
A second.
Steven, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion?
I don't know, I just said this year ago.
Yep, said this year ago. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next under staffing, we just had a CFI for current posting status for FY26 positions.
Yeah, so just, just want to give you a brief, uh, understanding, I believe that, uh, the, the yellow highlight, um, under the title name, um, because we extracted this from our position sheet that has obviously hundreds of names on it, but these are the positions that, um, are or will be vacant as of July 1st. Um, any yellow cell that has a number in it, that is the posting code, has already been posted. Um, I believe most all, if not all, of the professional teaching staff has been posted with the exception of, um, some title positions that are currently vacant. Um, the reason I am holding off on those is because of the uncertainty of how much when and timing of when we're going to get our title award for next year. Um, I was in, I think I was been at some state meetings, I was in a state meeting on Friday, um, I would encourage that, there's a belief that we are going to get money, but, um, I'm also concerned that they confirmed that we won't get the notice that we usually get in May, that this is your allotment, that that may not come until August, September, or maybe even October. So we may have to start the year a little shorthanded in the title world until we're comfortable with what that allotment money is. And we're just fortunate, fortunately unfortunate, that we have a couple of open positions, so we're, we're not at risk of having to riff somebody. Um, and I think we'll just roll the dice and then we'll, we'll have enough money to pay the people that we have contracts with, or we will issue contracts to. Um, but that's, that's just briefly how, how to read that report. If you have any questions, go ahead.
Any questions around that?
Yeah, the truancy officer, why are we still carrying that? Because under state statute, the local PD or officers are truancy officers.
I'd be happy to take it down because nobody's ever replied for it.
That's what I mean, it's never been. And, and under state statutes, law enforcement are the truancy if we need them.
Looks like you may want to say something.
Yes, I hear you, and I think when we have had one, right, we, because we have until this last year, it's been a very valuable, um, role, I mean, it's not like, it's not a lot of hours, not a lot of, not a lot of money, but, uh, it does a lot of, uh, they've done a lot of good, um, especially with the, the protocols that we are now following. Uh, the good news is, uh, that, that the courts are more active, right, in, in supporting families with truancy, uh, for that puts a lot of, uh, puts a lot of communication left, which is really incredibly important. And that truancy officer, uh, having discipline, uh, what allows you, them to do is see what we can put across buildings, um, and support, uh, families and social units, which is, uh, I think incredibly valuable. And yes, we haven't had it this year, uh, I would say, at least from my middle school perspective, it's been, uh, that's been a pretty big hole, uh, just having, uh, that, that kind of, that person doing that work.
Thanks. Jess.
Um, the crossing guard, the Riverside crossing guard, I noticed it's not posted. Has it?
It is posted.
It is posted. Well, it's not according to this.
It's posted, it's posted this year, it's not.
It was, but.
It hasn't been posted for next year.
For next year.
Yeah.
Sorry?
These are postings for 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Not for a year.
Thank you. Um, I just had a thought about those flashing lights that are like down by the library and the Parks and Rec building, I have no idea the cost of those, I know they grab my eye when I'm driving and I didn't know if that would help without that posting and.
Yeah, so, right, there is one that was put up and then they weren't allowed to turn on because it, because it's not, uh, because it's state. So I know we have met, uh, Rick, Rick had, uh, sort of, uh, also met, because the town's also worried about that spot, right?
Yeah.
Has asked, uh, uh, for, for help around that, that crossing, just to make it more safe. It, it, that, that cross gives me nightmares, I actually kind of want it to go away, to be moved down, uh, because it's right on the corner and it's not, it's not fantastic. I know, um, uh, Sheriff Batista sometimes is able to show up, uh, just depending on his schedule, but you just, it's a, the goodness of his heart is being at, uh, you know, here and, and a part of our community, um, but, uh, so we are waiting, uh, last I've heard, we're waiting for the state to get back to us and then traffic engineers.
Yeah, we, we asked for, um, the town to, excuse me, to reach out to the regional commission, um, about doing a study, doing some engineering on that and, um, ask them to ask the regional commission to reach out to the state, because it's a state highway to, to find out what the best solution is. Um, because we, we all came up with some great ideas, but my experience is the state highway engineers, I say that.
But I have been actually.
So I, I really want it to come from the state of how, because they had to be concerned about safety too, I'm just not sure that it's risen to their level until now, and this, and the town is working with the regional commission and the state to try to find a solution.
Now with the culvert.
Of which I'm sure we'll have to write some sort of check to contribute to it, but we'll see what. It's perfect timing with the culvert.
I was going to say, I'm not, I, I can't envision exactly where that culvert is being done, but I'm wondering, I was wondering if it could overlap with the culvert.
It would be perfect timing for them to solve it with the culvert construction.
It's just not going to be a culvert construction, bridges also going to be, it may be down for six months.
Do you have an email address of somebody that can send something to at the state level? Yeah, okay. Send something from the board.
They were talking about this year, they were talking about the bridge being closed for quite a while, so that may be the same, same, if everything could be done the same time, that will not affect our crossing guards because.
We've got it all the time, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I can tell you. This would be a great one to reach out to.
And then also Project Action is also talking about it, uh, they're also waiting because they've also been having this for a solution there.
Yeah, that's, okay.
We, we can, of course, but put correspondence together from the board about our safety concerns and push it along. All right, anything else on the current posting? Okay, next up we have reports, so first we have the administrative report that was in our packet, are there any questions around the report?
I don't have a question, I just have an appreciation for them putting this together. I know parent teacher conferences are coming up, so I'm thinking of all of you, because I know that's a lot. Um, and then obviously you guys have mentioned testing as well, so it's, just know that you support me in all of that, so thank you.
No questions, we'll move on the agenda, so next up we have the financial reports, so we have January and February.
Yes, um, so you've got the two reports and I'll be honest with you, Karen did these for me, so you looked at it to see where we're at, um, so, February, um, if you go to page four, which is page 88 in the packet of February, um, they're looking at a negative forecasted position of a negative 1.3 million, but again, as I usually tell you, if you go back to the revenue page, um, which is page 85, um, you know, we've got there towards the bottom, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 or 9, 10 from the bottom, we still have $5 million of state revenue to come in, um, happens every year, you guys watch that number go down, that, um, negative forecasted position starts out at somewhere around negative $14 million, drops until we get to the end of the year and then we're to the good, so, um, nothing unusual, everything looks normal, um. Do you have any answer, any questions?
Any questions on the financial report? Is there a motion to approve the financial reports for January and February? Steve, may I motion as your second?
Second.
Second, any discussion, further discussion? Are those in favor? Okay, next under reports, we have test score presentation.
Love it.
Spoiler alert.
Right, alright. So when I originally talked about data with y'all, I wanted to really dive in and see where we were. So the data that I'm presenting to you is looking at cohorts as well as some historical data and just where we're at this year. So we have an overall understanding of where to stay filled and where we're moving. And then also what is the very little amount of impact that we have through CDE, because we are just doing it through path riders, and what some of that can tell us as well. So understanding the colors, just so that we were all on the same page, when we're looking at iReady, it does have five colors. The top tier being the students who we're expected to perform their proficiency on any state testing. The lighter green, at this time, if the students were to take the test, they may not be proficient, they may or may not. But by the end of the year, we would expect them to be proficient. And then moving all the way down, where the dark red, these three are the grade levels behind. Again, I looked at cross-sectional, so across the years, and I also looked at cohorts to see how our students were growing. Was it a specific group of students or was it with impact within a grade level? So that was one of the things I was looking at. Just understanding who's taking the iReady data. We had 771 students that did it in the fall, and then in the winter it was 753. Overall, we had 673 students grow. So even if we're not seeing the colors necessarily change, we know that our students are growing by using these diagnostic tools. And then the personalized instruction, that is simply who's utilizing the iReady program and the lessons on the iReady program. Again, we're looking at how we're, how we are for the past three years, and just pulling that data. Is there any big difference, is it one specific cohort? So then I broke it up just by grade levels and wanted to look, okay, over the past three years, is there a specific cohort? And I did follow students as best as I could, and I worked with Curriculum Associates who provides iReady diagnostics, to see how far back I could go, and were there any specific trends? There were not a lot of trends to look for as far as where our growth was in reading and/or math. So you're going to see similar things throughout the years, as far as that.
Can you just step us through how you would read the cohort?
So if I was looking at Kinder at 22, 23, then in first grade, they'd be 23, 24, and then in second grade, be 24, 25. So if you were to take the time and kind of look, in ELA, I, I made a notice in fourth grade, that cohort tends to grow. And so I did look just into some other historical data with fourth grade in specific domains. Was it a specific domain that they grew in? And it, it was very sporadic, couldn't find any specifics at that time. So then, we're just going to dive right into sixth, seventh, eighth, very similar. There's not a specific trend or within a domain. So I looked from fall to winter, just this year, right? Understanding that we have not implemented CDE in our K5. We, we have just introduced it, we're starting with impressions for ELA. And, but we have done it in sixth, eighth to varying levels. So this, this is telling in a lot of ways, and as I've been diving to the data, I also looked back at what our preschool students have, and we've worked with Rachel and Courtney with, what do our preschool students have? How long have we implemented this? How many students is this actually reflecting? And all of that was really interesting. So we are seeing larger growth in our K1 because of quite a few things. One would be having the preschool in there and giving some of that data. Is it enough to increase a huge amount? No, and I'm forgetting the numbers at the moment, but we are seeing the benefits of the preschool so far in that very young age. We're also talking to Rachel and Beth about how they're doing instruction and their interventions this year as far as ELA, and what some of those conversations are. So our K1, we're definitely seeing some more growth. Even second grade, we're seeing quite a bit just in within that realm. But also, I just want to mention, you can't be one or two grade levels behind in Kinder. So you're not going to see any reds there or peaks, right? Same thing with first grade, you're not going to be able to see two grade levels or three grade levels behind because we don't have that data. They're still too little. So that, that is some of the discrepancy there. So if you're looking at why we suddenly have the drop as the grades go, get older, that is one of the reasons. Sixth, seventh, and eighth, we do see overall in ELA, our students are growing from fall to winter, so that is a trend that we see.
Can I ask one question, if you go back to the previous slide? Looking at this throughout the years, the one question I've asked previously is, the jump from fourth to fifth always seems like a backward slide. Is there a large learning jump that happens in those two grades?
There's a few learning jumps in any education, third grade and fifth grade. Third grade, we are having students more independent, and they have to show independence, even on the way the standards are written. In second grade, it's support, a lot of the standards are written with support, third grade, it's independent. Fifth grade, we have the jump in science, we also have the jump in rigor, for, we're not doing a paragraph anymore, or response to literature within that small section, we're now doing like a full essay, right? So there is a large jump in the amount that has to be produced as well as the depth.
Thank you. Reading, sorry.
Nope.
Also, around fourth and fifth grade, learning to read goes away, and they are now expected to be able to read to learn.
Correct.
I have lots of questions, I'm just trying to figure out when to ask them between this and the next presentation as well. I think one of my core questions is evidenced in here by the sheer number of students who are not even just one grade level behind. But the, another way the reds have been explained to me before is those students in either shade of red, excuse me, let me say it differently, the students within the yellow have the skills that they need to get onto grade level that year. The students within the red don't have those skills at ready, right, like easily accessible. And I think how we as a district, I just want to understand, you know, how are we helping these students to access the grade level materials, or are we accommodating for them? And I'm not just speaking special ed, I'm just speaking all, all of it, right? Because if, if they can't, and this is just reading, right? If they are this behind in reading, how can you solve a math problem if you can't read a math problem? And I just, I want to understand, and I don't know, I don't know how, you know, I, I know this is evident to anybody who's in the, in the schools and, and looking at this, but I just, I don't know how to dig into it or to address it, or, or how it is being addressed as, as well. I know, I know it is, right? I know you guys are, are concerned with it, but.
So if, if I may, and I.
Yeah, there's a lot.
I can go, I can go a couple different ways, and you all, you all just tell me how you want me to go. I can just show you overall our district trend, and I can either pause or continue and show how the CDE work is working. And I do have a video to show how, how it's working with students and teachers. And then principals can respond to each building specifically, according to how their interventions are going and how they're responding to it that way. Or we can go ahead and let principals kind of jump in now and speak to their specific buildings and what they have in place and how they're responding to.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sidetrack your presentation. My question.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine, and some of, some of my things I may come back to as we get into the next one.
I would wait till the end, because it seems like we have a plan, so let's, let's get with your plan.
So definite reading, I do want to address everything that you're saying, I think through the, the presentation that we have later with the evidence-based research assessments that we have, as well as some CDE, it may answer some of your questions. But if I don't, please ask it.
I will.
Okay. So again, this is sixth through ninth grade. So in those year, the three-year span, we don't see ninth grade because we just started doing the diagnostic and iReady with all students this year. I think it was, Bindi, tell me if I'm wrong, but it was a little bit of iReady previously, but this year it was intentional for all ninth graders, and next year you'll have 10th grade data as well, because it'll be intentional with all 10th graders.
Yeah, so prior to iReady, really was not set up for ninth graders. And so I think last year, they probably did some tweaking to the system, and so now we are using it, so it's, so that it's valuable information for our students and our teachers to. And they use that information in their CIP, so.
Okay. So then if we just look at math, here's how many students that took the assessment in fall, winter, overall, 670 students did grow, and I've got about 400 students utilizing that online piece for their mini lessons. The reason the K1 and 2 is highlighted is due to the fact that some of that data was missing, and I worked with Curriculum Associates, and we were able to get it back, so they were highlighting it for me to show, hey, I was able to get your data back. So there's nothing really significant about the black outline. But in math, again, not a lot of rhyme or reason, if you look at specific cohorts, trying to understand why, we, we weren't really able to hone in on why one cohort was growing or not growing. And that's really where I was sinking my teeth into this year, like, I, I'm not one to just say it happens just because. I want to know specifically what's happening in the classroom to ensure that our students are growing. Sixth, seventh, and eighth, we do not have ninth grade data on this for this type of data or the fall to winter, because ninth grade is using Alex. So here's the three-year span. And then we look at fall to winter, again, we do have a growth trend, ours is growth. I could speak more to math, because I've been in so many classrooms doing math with the teachers and the students. I can say that we are closing the gap significantly more in math. So even if those dark reds are not necessarily changing to a light pink, those students are still growing and moving, and a lot of those gaps are closing, which I'm very excited about. Again, we're looking at overall growth trends in all grade levels. And I can be showing domains as far as math, because I can speak to those. And this is the same side y'all saw in the fall, and there was three focus areas that our high school had. It was arithmetic readiness, real numbers, and functions in line, so that was the data that we really tracked. And again, that's our fall to our winter data for Alex, and those are the three areas in which we see that our students grow. And then I just kind of broke it down with specific numbers for y'all, so you can see it a little better. And those are getting four of the areas. The functions in lines is what our students are working on right now, that is their current focus. Again, looking at pre-K and understanding that's giving us some really strong foundation. And that pre-K experience will not begin to full fruition until many, many years down the line, but we're starting that now, so our students have it. But that does not mean that we are leaving students behind. We are looking at the CDE work in order to really hone in on specific skills and gaps that students have and hit those for all of our students. Our K9 students have demonstrated some improvement from fall to winter, and then again, we just talk about the CDE work. Going too fast, just tell me?
I want to add to that, I just, I'm super excited for CDE, I'm super excited for all of the students that are going through this, and it is critical to make those growths, and those growths you're not going to see for the years to come as they move through it. And I know we'll get to this in some of the next presentation, but I'm just going to state it again, it's also, right, it, it also needs to be done, there are students who, because we didn't have the CDE in place, and they are not on grade level, we also need to support those. It's not a, great, we're doing CDE, and we're going to be great years down the road. We also need to think about how are we supporting the students who are not on grade level right now? And I know we'll get to that, I, I just want to state it again here where it talks about CDE. At least from my perspective, it, it's not, great, we're doing CDE, you know, our work's done, it's, it's definitely not. And I, and I'm not saying that anybody that I've come across thinks that, I just.
And having that curriculum now is definitely going to be helping our kids now. Yes, we just finished the math, and now we're pushing it out to all students for math. And we started with the ELA, we have our standards aligned, so very exciting with all the felt and, and everything that's going on. And now we're going to start breaking down standards and making sure our metrics are aligned, and they actually speak to it a little bit in the video. Your kids are excited about it. Okay, I also said as soon as they released the cognizance scores, I bring those to you, so this is just some of our cognizance scores, and I actually did it in cohorts. So I know it's kind of small, but in that very first one, we have grade three in year 23 to grade four in year 24. So those are the same students, and I thought that might be more beneficial for you to see, instead of just seeing how grade three, grade four, grade five, and our, our advent team really helped me figure out what would be best for our community and our board to see in order to see how we're doing. This is with the caveat that in 23, academia was brand new to the state, they had pulled the scores, and then they pushed them back out. So they may or may not reflect truly a Springfield understanding of proficiency, but I still wanted to give you some comparison to see where we were in 23 and now 24, and then next year, I'll bring you 25. And then we have math, same thing, I did the cohorts, I did not do just overall. And here's science, I did not do cohorts for science, because it's fifth, eighth, and 11th grade, because I just would not make sense. So I just don't do the two years. Okay. And now we're just going to just dive into competency-based education and where we're at as far as math. We're supporting student success, because we have the iReady diagnostic, and we also have Ready Classroom, which a lot of us call Ready Math, and all those programs are standard-based, in which you can move around in the book, easier said than done, right? But you can pull different standards and different lessons out to really align your expectations for students and meet them where they are at. Also, understanding anytime you implement a new program, they call it implementation dip, but we are still doing this with fidelity of the curriculum. And then looking at student needs, iReady also, Ready Classroom, Ready Math, so the program, the digital program, which has individualized lessons, as well as the math program that teachers are teaching, both have remediation lessons, they have intervention activities, they have skill-based applications. And so all of that definitely can meet students where they are at, and helps students who are below grade level, but also helps students who are meeting or above grade level, to make sure we're hitting all students where they're at.
Please, Ready Math, feedback I've received is that it is a very literacy-heavy program. So how does a student who can't read on grade level access these math programs?
So when you're looking at the actual online independent lessons, those can be read to the student. Those are at the student's level, so that way they can access it. If we are looking at the program itself, all the classes that I've been in, teachers are putting in the supports in order for students to meet their students where they are at. So that means there is a word problem, how to identify the different pieces. So if that means there is a word problem, how to identify the different pieces, how to do the three reads? Are they reading that piece to them? Are they looking at the algorithm? There's so many different ways to look at it as well as all the activities that go with it that don't necessarily meet the foundational reading. But we're also looking at how to break down a word problem. And as the rigor goes up, what are we doing with all of that in order for students to deepen their understanding and learning? Then I just wanted to show you where we're at as far as implementation. We have awareness where they're just simply learning about competency-based education and diving into that. We have a first implementation where we have one or two teachers teaching just their own class. Or they may be teaching a couple of classes, but it's, they're kind of on their own, trying it for the very first time. And then full means the entire grade level. So PK is full implementation. And K one, two, four, and five is first because we only have one teacher working with their classroom. And then six, seven, and eight, it's full because even though it's one teacher, they're meeting, they're hitting all the kids because it's one teacher per grade level. And ninth grade, it is full implementation. ELA, we're at awareness in K five, PK five, actually. As well as seventh, we're working with Riverside and that. Sixth grade, it is full. We have a teacher that's hitting all the sixth grade students as well as making sure that her matrices are lined up. Eighth grade, I put first just because we're, we're barely dipping our toe into it. And it's been a really great experience so far, so I want to keep that up. And ninth grade, again, this is first implementation. Science and social studies, K five, we're not there yet. There's some awareness in six, eight. Ninth grade, full implementation for science and social studies. We are working with those teachers. So it's first implementation. We're trying it out, tweaking it, seeing how it works.
What about ten to twelve?
We are barely touching. Like when I say barely, we just met last week to start talking to about.
Across all of them?
For math, ELA, science, yes. And social studies, yes. Last week, we met with all of the teachers to talk about what are our next steps. So I didn't even put an A there yet just because it was one meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So this is where I kind of got into the weeds. And I actually pulled every single student from the entire district just because I was curious, right? Like are, is there any rhyme or reason to domains? The yellow area arrows are showing what specific domains our pathfinders were following on the competency-based path, right? The, I think a lot of you have seen, they call it the snake, but it's our scope and sequence. So that's what the yellow arrows are. You see overall growth in all the areas. But also you see if you're looking at national norms, where we have grown significantly more and in what areas. K five, because we only have one teacher implementing, we're not seeing a lot of growth specifically in those areas. Six, seven, eight, you definitely see some areas in which teachers are really implementing this and where they're growing. So I thought, I thought that was, it was interesting to me at least. Again, for those that do not know, we have the scope and sequence. The ELA scope and sequence will not look anything like this. Math is far more linear. ELA, we have all of our different parts and we have to see how those align and come together. So when we get that fleshed out, I'm excited to show that to you. And then what our matrices are, you're going to be hearing students talk about it. So I thought it'd be great just to put a refresher up there. This is what the matrix is like when they talk about a one, two, three, and four, or they're leveling up. It's because they're talking about, I went from a one to a two, or I went from a two to a three, and what I need to do in order to level up again. And. It's a longer video, but I tried to cut things out and I'm like, oh no, I can't take that voice away. So here we go. Hopefully that one works.
I'm Ms. Mero. I'm one of the kindergarten teachers here at Elm. This is Kendall, one of my students. So Kendall, we're going to talk about our path again. Okay? Kendall, where on the path are you? And what are we working on in adding numbers together to make a bigger number? We were working on, what were we working on?
Nine to numbers, circling the numbers that's much bigger.
Circling the numbers that were less than. It's called comparing numbers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kendall, this is our new one that we're working on. And the very first level says I can count from one to twenty. Do you think you can do that? You want to try?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Awesome job. Kiss your brain. And when we get back to the classroom, we'll put a sticker right there because you just, what did you do? What'd you do? Did you do this one?
Yeah.
So what'd you do? What do we call that? Remember? We leveled, yeah, leveled up. Awesome job, Kendall. Kendall, of the ones that you've completed or the ones that you're working on, is there one that you're most proud of? Why are you most proud of that one?
Because, because I done all of these ones and I can't wait to finish this one to go to the next ones.
So I think this year is that really the students, it's definitely student-focused and student-centered. Students, I know exactly where the students are at. The students are excited about learning the math. They're, they love the fact that they're leveling up. So some of them, like I, I have quite a few in my room that have leveled up so fast that I'm like, as I'm making the formative assessments, I am struggling to keep up with them to get them all done. But they are, they're really, I can really see what they know and what they don't know yet. And then really focus in on, like when I pull them for small groups, my groups are more intentional because I can really focus on those skills that they haven't quite yet mastered so that they can level up.
So what does this sticker mean here?
I finished the one, so I mean two, I think.
Yeah. So can you read that one to me? No, it's number two.
Can you? New facts to add and subtract with the end to twenty.
Nice. I'd like you to add the two, the two batches together, Matthew, instead of sorting by color. Can you add this group to this group?
This group to that whole?
Yep, add all of these together. How many do you have there?
One, two, three, four, five, five, five.
Okay, I'm going to write it right in here. And how many are in this group?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, thousand.
So can you solve this equation, Matthew?
Five plus seven equals five, four, three, five, six, seven, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Nice job. Write your answer right there. Go ahead and write it right in. Good work.
Speak to what you just shared, like related to a particular standard and how that slowed your pace down.
Two of these standards to get it level three, they need to get to twenty. Some of my students have done that. Many of them have not. And I know it's going to take some of those students longer, more of a year to get to adding and subtracting to twenty. So I know I need to get moving on the next tiles, on the next standards.
So hi, Sophia. Thanks for being here today. Sophia, can you tell us a little bit about what this binder is and what we do with it in math class?
So in math, we use a binder to keep all of her math checks in it.
What is this front page?
The front page is studying like stuff. And we use it like right now, I believe we are in this one. And so we finished all of these four. So we use those ones because we already finished it all and we completed all.
What do the stars mean on yours?
The stars means we did well on it.
Okay.
So I was trying to figure out how many we would get to eighteen. And we were seeing what missing number we needed. So I counted on numbers, numberless number line. So I counted by once and I got to six.
So you can use any strategy you want for this one, right? Now, how come you don't have a star right here yet?
Because I haven't done that one.
Is it something that you're working on?
Yes.
Can, do you know what it is that you're working on for level three?
I can solve two-step word problems a hundred by using drawings and equations.
I'm just reading. And that's what we're working on right now in class, right? Is it kind of hard?
A little bit.
I think so too. This is one of our hardest, yeah? So tell us about this one. This is not in your binder, but what is it?
So this one is, so I used the numberous number line. So I made it to my evens, then I counted by tens to make forty. Then I went to fifty and then I counted on ones to get to fifty-one. And then I saw that I had twenty-nine to make fifty-one. So fifty-one people got on the rollercoaster.
I think this one is the train one.
Yeah, the train.
Yeah.
They got on the train.
What do you call this thing right here?
A number bond. So this is the whole, a part and a part. This was the part that I needed to know. So that's why I use my number bond and picture.
Why do you like the binder check?
I like binder checks because I like how it has math and stuff in it. Because math is one of my favorite things to do.
How do you feel when you get a sticker on your matrix?
I feel really proud that I'm getting more powerful, more powerful on math because before I wasn't really good, especially on reading.
Powerful. What a nice word to use. I'm glad you feel powerful when you level up.
Very smart.
Good for you. Well, thank you, Sophia, for explaining all about our binders and what we do in math.
How do you know what game to choose?
Well, that part is hard because sometimes I play different stuff that I'm not supposed to do. But then I figure out that I'm supposed to do one of the math things so I can level up on my stuff.
So that's not helping you level up?
We shouldn't do it.
I noticed on your choices for games that there was different levels. Do you ever look at those before choosing a game?
Yes, sometimes I do. Sometimes I look at the level three. Sometimes I like to do level three so I can level up good. And I really like.
Wait, does she sit there and follow you around and tell you which, which choice to make? Who makes, who makes those choices? So who's in charge of their learning? Yes. And the reason you make those good choices is because you want to what?
Level up.
And when you level up, you feel?
Smarter.
Smarter, stronger, smarter. We'll take both, right? Can you do me a favor? Can you kiss your brain? Oh, yes. Look at that smile too. Brains need love, especially when yours is working so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. So this year's work with the math CBE has been challenging, both for me and the students. But I think that it's really given a lot of ownership to the students over their learning in math. And actually, we, we use the code of independent learning, which is part of the CBE framework, for everything that we do in the classroom. And even yesterday, we were talking about our reading and our literacy menu. And I said, well, what's going to help you level up? And they said, well, we don't have levels for reading yet. And I said, I know, but we're going to get there. So we use that same kind of language in all parts of our day. And the kids are really starting to understand that they really are in charge of their learning and the rigor, I think, of their learning too. We have conversations often about the choices that we make as learners and how that's helping us level up in our, our math path. I think the work with the standards last year was really wonderful. And this year, teaching all of those standards in this progression has really made me sink my teeth into them in a way that I haven't before. And it's really made me see some of the gaps that students have, but also some of the amazing strengths that they have. And so it's been a challenge for me, but a really good challenge to allow students to really move quickly when they need to move quickly or slow down when they need to slow down. They'll, they'll already be really used to taking ownership of their learning. And you won't have to waste time figuring out where they're at because you're doing that formative assessment constantly.
So using the CBE and the different sections that there are now, we've been able to really focus on not what the students can't do or what the students can do. It's, it's what they're growing to do as they go along. And the little pieces that like piece by piece what they've missed before, how we can kind of figure out where we went wrong or where the student went wrong or what was happening and how we can now justify teaching the curriculum, but to students who've missed these pieces. So we've seen a lot of these seventh graders have grown exponentially in just their basic operations. Pieces, the pieces of using iReady and Ready Math together have made it so the language of what we're doing is really kind of succinct with each other and coincides. And we've seen the growth, not just on the iReady scores, but from quiz to quiz to assessment to assessment to test to test. They are using a lot, lot more conversation and a lot more discourse and a lot more understanding of the, the verbal part of the material and the vocabulary. And a lot of that comes from just talking about the different pieces as you go up. All right. So how are you feeling about math this year?
Pretty good. It's been getting easier the more we go on.
So what do you mean easier? How's it getting easier?
Like the way that you're breaking it down, like everything's breaking down to get it so that we do stuff like faster.
Okay.
And get through it like easily.
Good. So now like when we looked at this, right? I remember you took a look at this earlier this year, right, with another student? And one of the things you were talking about was easy to hard, right? And that's how you always thought about it, that this is going to be easier than this. How's your mind changed as we keep going on?
It's just like these things, like they go up, like what you need to work on.
So to get to the level four, you need to be able to.
Work on like one, two, and three.
Right. So one of the things we do for our before, right, is you have a choice between someone that's level one or two or three and four. And a lot of you and your classmates, you, you for a long time were pulling these.
Yeah.
Has this remained easier in your mind or is it just that you've understood these concepts?
I've understood those more. They're both kind of the same level. It's just I usually go for those ones.
All right. Now, how do you feel when we have discussions during the assignments? When we're actually working, you guys are going back and forth about the math. Do you feel like you're understanding each other?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay. Do you, do you get more from those discussions with each other than you do sometimes when I'm just kind of lecturing and talking at you?
Yeah.
Why?
Because I get to actually like tell what they're thinking about it too, instead of just what, like I'm thinking, how it goes. So we just get to communicate about it.
Awesome, man. Great. I mean, a lot, a lot of times what happens with us is it's more of a push to get to those levels. So, so as long as the, the effort is there, we're, we're starting to reach. If the effort's not there is where, where we kind of find.
There's a different conversation.
So, you know, if, if these students are making the choice that they feel like they have this and they might not.
Right.
It's my job to help them understand the pieces that are missing. It's not necessarily my job to tell them they're missing that yet.
So it's your job to help them unearth what's missing?
Yes.
And then what does their job become?
Their job becomes to keep pushing.
When you say keep pushing, are you saying close that gap?
Saying let's close the gap and let's also make sure we keep, if we're moving from a one to a two, but we're missing one piece in our one, keep doing a two. But I'll make sure that in there is something that will continue to, to show me and assess if they had that one.
So you're learning, constantly moving forward through your learning?
Yep, absolutely.
What is it that you experience daily or at various points that show you, hey, I'm learning math?
Because it tends to get easier for me the more that I do it. So I'll like know what to do faster than I was doing it before.
Yeah. So one of the, the biggest changes in my teaching over the past year is I'm not looking for just the finished product. I'm looking for the effort that's put into the work. I'm looking for the quality over the quantity. And as they show effort and as they put the work in, I'm getting more from them as time goes on. So there's many students actually in this grade level that in the beginning of the year, things were so, they, they just picked easy. They picked easy every time in their head. So we had to change it from easy to show me effort and show me the challenges and work through it. I have a ton of students who maybe did twenty percent of the work from the first month or two of school and they're up to like eighty to ninety percent of the work at this point right now.
So something that's pretty phenomenal is when you're looking at the progressions, it's not always at that grade level. So if we're looking at eighth grade progressions and you're looking at a level one, sometimes it's the grade level before. If we notice a lot of our students, because I was able to go into some stations in, in the middle school. And when I was in those stations and we were talking about what we were going to do to help our students, we actually looked three grade levels prior to that grade level of what progression is going to get the students ready for that specific lesson and how are we going to support them? So that's kind of what we heard. And we also heard there's a lot of discourse. Math is louder now. So we're supposed to be hearing students talk about math activities and not so much the teacher, it's really the students and how are they learning, how are they engaging, and how are they showing? So and how are they showing up? I don't know if any of that answered any of your questions.
I'm going to hold my other ones for as we continue.
Is this a good point for questions or?
So principals want to kind of jump in as well on this and answer anything that would be great.
Questions, comments?
I have a plea.
Yes.
And I want to like hit my head off against the wall. I would love for every one of our students to be able to access their iReady all the time. And I understand that there's a real push, like kids shouldn't have so much screen time. I understand that, but I also know, eh, you know, you go to any restaurant and parents are handing over their phones. And I just am thinking if there's, if the students can access their iReady, because, you know, Chase tells me how much he enjoys it. Um, so if they're, you know, in this downtime when they are accessing screens, it would be great if they could access iReady and play a math game or play a literacy game instead of watching YouTube videos. Um, and I know that there's some technology hiccups, I understand. But I really, really, really want our kids to be able to access it whenever they want. Um, so that, you know, they passive learning, um, versus like again, you know, just those dumb screaming YouTube videos. You know, not all kids are going to do it, not all families are going to do it. But I think having that option available for those that want to take advantage of it would be really fantastic. And I'm hopeful that it would help.
And I think we are a one-click sign-on through Clever. And so students can get on their Clever accounts, um, then they should be able to do that. And I believe in our primary grades, they have like QR code or a clever type.
Yes, the classroom teachers have the QR code for parents. Um, and this is something we can highlight in conferences too, is, you know, bringing in that piece. The kids are going to be on screen time. Um, this is a beneficial way for them to learn. It's so fun and engaging. And, and like you said, D, like they, the kids love iReady. Like they will come in and want a positive break and they will, can I get on my iReady? Uh, because it's engaging their learning. Um, and we've seen a lot of growth and a lot of benefits from the learning they get just from doing the iReady.
I, I wasn't even going to go there, but I would say that was probably the only good thing to come out of COVID for my family was being able to access things like that at home. Um, since COVID, we have used Clever. We have done, and I would say whether it's iReady, I know, right? There's, there's iExcel, there's Bottle, there's Prodigy, there's the iReady, there's, uh, Get Epic. All of those that we access at home with our kids, but it's not, um, well-known. It's not well, uh, shared that it's an option. And I would just ask whatever it is, making sure that if we're going to share and, and really put our money behind something, I would just make sure it's something that is utilized back in the classroom. And it's something that's going to provide growth to that classroom, whether it's Get Epic, Bottle, Prodigy, um, iReady, whatever it is, there's lots of options. But I would say it's definitely not publicized. We have used it for both my second grader and my fifth grader. Um, you know, school vacation breaks, they're on Get Epic. But Get Epic, you can only access from, I think it's like eight AM to three PM during the school day. Um, different things like that. So, uh, I never even would have thought of that, but I would just. If we do push it, let's make sure it ties back in and we publishize the right one. Or maybe we publishize all of them and some families are going to use one or the other. Yeah, I guess.
I mean, it's an option. It, it, I mean, it's like, the timing is frustrating. And, you know, like specifically Chase, he might have downtime on a Saturday afternoon. It'd be great if he could access and, and do that for a little bit instead of the screaming, like, I know, screaming middle school YouTube videos want to make me crazy. Um, but like figuring out those technology hiccups because it is, and it's really frustrating to him too sometimes. If he, if he wants to do more, he can't. He's getting up against that window because his schedule doesn't allow for him to practice within this a lot of time. And so it's just, it's a huge frustration.
Are you saying there's a time on iReady as well? There's time with Chase?
No, I, we can access iReady anytime. I, I'm talking to a middle schooler. So I mean, I think, I think, you know, you might need to educate the parents again, um, because the, I don't know.
The Chromebooks might default shut off. That was a parent request.
But Chase, we don't have a Chromebook. We just log into.
But iReady is live.
Chase can't get in and we've tried and tried and tried on his personal Chromebook. It's, there's.
He's going to be like anything then, because I, I know we have families that are, so that's why.
I will send it into you if you want it.
Or, um, or with Chase.
Yes.
Okay, we've had some hands up for a while. So Patty Kemp.
Hi. Um, well, first of all, as far as educating parents, that's not our job. Our job is to educate our students. And, um, for us to be, not judgment of the parents that are out there. Um, another thing is I see all these graphs and everything going and I want to know how much time is actually spent on building the curriculum.
Yeah. I, I can jump in. I mean, it's different, uh, for grade, just because of the rollout, right? So that's why we've been using some of those, um, Thursdays for. Alina's also spent a lot of time, um, working with our instructional coach going in and observing teachers, um, and debriefing where they are, how they're using the approach. These are big lifts, Patty, uh, right? In, uh, uh, just in sort of, that's why I've been working math first, right? One, it's easier, it's more linear. So it does take a lot of time, uh, to kind of, to get that in the line. The next step, right, of course, is take all of those, you saw the snakes or the, uh, the continuum, the progressions. Um, is, the next step is to put those all into one place, right? And then do a gap analysis, which is going to, which is, which, uh, and then start finding tuning between grade levels to make sure that the progressions talk to each other. Right now they're built on grade level standards. I'm not sure if that, that helped.
Um, not really, because the way I teach is somewhere different than what my neighbor teaches or what the person up the road teaches. But I don't have a right to tell them that their child can't, can't, or that they can't go to dinner and would be looking at their phones. Just because I don't do it doesn't mean it's wrong for them.
Patty, we're not taking away the autonomy from any teacher and that's why I've been going into classrooms. So there's been several hours of just putting the scope and sequence together. And then, um, I'm going in the classrooms along with our CDE solution, um, consultant, who's Dan Joseph. And we do coaching sessions and we re-meet with teachers and we really talk to students most of the time and talk about what the impact of putting this forward in an intentional way is on them and how they're taking ownership over their learning. So the hours are encompassed through the half-day sessions that they had last year, where they put the scope and sequence together and then several other sessions where they had to put matrices together. All the sessions that the administrators have given them on Thursdays as well as any half-day PD days where they're putting, um, their matrix as well as their, their units together. And then there's a follow-up with all of the coaching and debriefing with teachers and students that continue to happen this year and will continue for math. And now we're doing it through ELA. Does that help at all?
I'm not seeing much of a growth when I look at those charts. I mean, and you wouldn't, I, I just not seeing that much of a growth.
I don't disagree. And this is the first year that it's being implemented. But was.
This has always been behind. I don't understand what took us so long.
Okay, let's move on. Zach, you had your hand up next.
First, uh, I guess in the definition section, ninety, ninety, does where a performance equal number of students tested?
Yes.
So when you go to ninety-one and you look at twenty-four, twenty-five, you're going to get sixty-two clicks for students assessed?
Yes. So there's, there's a lot of different variations of sorts. Who finished the test? Um, was a student flagged? Was there enough students within a, a small group to account for? This is back and forth that I've been going with iReady, with how they're looking specifically at numbers and then diving deeper into what numbers can we actually count within a cohort? I mean, there was, there were some numbers that I'm like, wait, we need to show this grade level with all of this. And they're like, well, you need a minimum of thirty to even make it sustainable to add to the actual data graphs. So those were all the students that were tested, but it doesn't mean that we could use all the scores if they didn't finish it and if they left early, if, um, there's all kinds of reasons why a test.
It's also get flagged, like they rush it, right?
They rush it and, um, or they retake it. It's outside of the window. There's all kinds of things, but no, that's a good question.
And then to follow to that, we do the math across those three years that are displayed. It's actually an increase in kids who are not reading at the appropriate level. So then down on ninety-six, it says, shows that growth in academics. Curious how that correlation is made between the growth.
Fall to winter. I'm just, I'm just looking at fall to winter with that specific growth. I, over the course of three years, I agree, there wasn't anything super stable. There wasn't a trend that I could find. So I do agree with you.
Great.
In, in terms of, you know, making judgment calls regarding where our students are actually at utilizing standardized testing, I'd like to point out something that I had mentioned in the, um, the budget committee emails. And that is that standardized testing is almost unanimously considered one of the worst metrics for determining student success that exists. Um, I'm kind of in a unique perspective to be able to make that claim, considering my cousin was the person who created the computer model that proved it. In the mid nineteen eighties, we worked for the Department of Education for the state of Virginia. So I'm really just curious why we aren't putting out more education to parents regarding the overall uselessness of this as a metric in the first place so that we can put to rest this tired refrain of our school system being a failing system based on these test scores in the first place.
I can speak, you know, at least for L, for, you know, primary grades is, I know a lot of the teachers, when we take into account when students are using iReady, they're using a, a, a system on a device. And we're also, there's a dual responsibility. They are also learning how to use those devices, um, sustain attention on those devices. So that does skew and the teachers at L are great about explaining that to parents that, yes, these, these results might not accurately assess your student, but we're taking all these factors into account that we're also teaching them digital literacy at the same time. Um, and, you know, we, we also do a lot of.
Please, please forgive me. I apologize for interrupting. I'm not complaining about the iReady. I'm talking about the actual standardized tests that come after that.
Yes. And, and I can't speak to, you know, the other administrators at other grades, you know, but coming from working in middle schools. And something I would explain to my parents is that, you know, we're looking at the whole child and we're looking at that standardized test. And yes, it does, when we look at bigger matrices and like districts and federal, like we're looking at a very small point of data for a student. Uh, but I think in many districts, and I, I can speak for us, I, I think we do a good job explaining to parents. Um, I know it doesn't help when it comes to reporting as much, but that this is a very small slice of a, of a, of a picture of a student, like a portrait of a graduate. We have to really consider everything else. Um, and what did that student have a particularly bad day when they were just pushing the button? Um, you know, not really reading. So I think there's a lot of other factors, but I do agree that sometimes it is not the best measure.
I mean, we're required by the Agency of Education to do the cognitive testing.
Yeah.
So that's not, that's not it.
That's what I know. I'm just saying, I, I'm saying it more for the purposes of people who are saying, why should we, you know, spend X number of dollars for a failing school system? And this is why it's failing? Crap. You know, it's not. If, you know, if you're, if you're going to say that a school system is failing, let's actually establish a metric by which to determine whether it is or is not that actually can hold up to something. And these test scores are not that thing. You are, you know, listening to someone right now who got straight A's in school, has two degrees and an IQ of a hundred and sixty-six and couldn't score above a sixty-six percentile in reading or a thirty percentile in spelling. Because I can't test worth a damn. My standardized test scores say I shouldn't have been able to get through college. I think you would all agree it, it doesn't make the measure.
It's a piece of the puzzle, right? You have to use all the pieces together to make a shift.
Tiny, tiny, tiny piece.
Don't know, I don't disagree completely with that statement, but.
I mean, we've had long discussions at the board about the values of art and music versus just math and, and reading scores. We don't even touch science and history in this. And you would, you would make a determination that science and history is a gateway into reading and math. Because if you become interested in science or history, then you tend to read or you tend to want to do math equations to discover something. So not only focusing standardized test scores around math and, and ELA doesn't gravitate everything together to educate those kids.
The response my cousin got when he showed his computer model was, well, we have to have some measure for how to disperse government funds. Like, well, the Aztec system of human sacrifice was the only system they had too. They didn't make it a good one.
Okay, so back to test scores. Any other questions, comments around the iReady diagnostic? Okay, we'll move on in the agenda then. So next up we have assessment dyslexia following in all business.
Um, so this is a pretty long presentation, so I wasn't planning on going through the whole thing. I'm happy to take questions or I can just kind of highlight some of the things that changed.
Uh, there's a piece of it that I think ties back to the test scores.
But it's going to be long.
I don't think we need to go through the whole thing. I think.
We have a lot of things to do tonight.
No, I, I'm with you. Can I just call out one thing then?
Yep.
Um, and maybe we can have a discussion on it at a future meeting. It was around the, um, intervention, interventionists. Last page, that's why I can't find it. I guess those numbers don't make sense with me looking at the iReady scores with where we're at, right? If, if I'm looking at the iReady scores, I would expect to see hundreds of kids receiving interventions in K through two, three, three, five, and six through eight, right? Um, and that's where it, I, I just, it, that's where these two pieces tie together.
Um. So if I, if I can just kind of answer this piece right here and, and then please jump in after. So when we're looking at intervention, we're not looking at just interventionists.
Okay.
This is just interventionists doing some deep dive intervention with some students that they can either move quickly or some students that really need some of those other foundational pieces that a teacher cannot provide intervention in the classroom. Um, teachers do provide intervention in the classroom and that's why not for ELA. Just going to skip for math real quick. That's why they talked about the different levels for math and the progressions and being able to go back in the program two or three years in order to make sure we're filling those gaps that the students are missing so they can move up to grade level faster. Um, as far as ELA, I can't totally speak to all of that yet because we're just now building it and I expect to see some differences in the future. So I mean, not this year.
Looking at, right, we've got, based on what we're seeing on these iReady and have many discussions. I mean, on average, it's fifty percent are two or more grade levels behind on rough average. So I guess my concern is if they're two or more grade levels behind, how are teachers? So I guess my concern is if they're two or more grade levels behind, how are teachers addressing that inside? And I see you're, you guys both are eager to.
Well, I could just speak for, I mean, I think you're asking, you're, we're having two different conversations. Interventionist is talking about our literal Title I interventionists. So that's a general ed support, right? That's pretty intensive. Whereas you also have kids getting specialized instruction through special ed, right? We also have intervention blocks that are targeting different types, actually, bon ex fluency. So this is talking about those Title I interventionists, which, right, we have, which is one person, um, and, and.
So perhaps not giving the full picture?
So this is only talking about that one, that one role and how many kids they're serving in that, that it's not talking about, right, our, our special educators, how many kids are getting specialized instruction, it's not talking about, um, our, uh, our, right, others, all of our staff actually, who are going to the level of intervention, it's really just talking about that one position that's federally funded.
Yeah, I mean, same thing at Elm, we do a lot, you know, response to intervention. You know, we are catching the students that are, that are in the middle, the ones that might go through an EST process, not found eligible, we're doing those interventions right then and there, and those interventions carry through that process. And then if a student is found eligible, they will transition to getting their intervention back in ELA from a special educator based on their service minutes, whatever service they need. But our interventionist, like, like, you know, Nate's talking about, those are the ones that capture those that are in that mid-range. And all, and expanding all the way up to the kids that might be at grade level but need a little extra support in certain areas. So that's kind of why, I think that's the same thing, that's why that number is lower, because we're talking about the specific interventionists that are for those groups. But we have outliers, I mean, teachers are, at least at Elm, are doing small groups in, within their instruction in the classroom, where they're pulling a small group to their table, doing interventions there with specific groups of students. So it doesn't really capture, you know, that, that's a very specific, it's a Title I interventionist.
That actually does help answer my question, you know, this, this particular slide, right, is, is not showing the full intervention picture.
I would, I would say the worry, right, that I, it is riding heavy on my shoulders is, if federal funding doesn't come through and we don't have these roles that are doing that really intensive lift for kids, who are struggling with reading, doesn't matter, right, if they have an IP or a Model Four, right? Just matters that they, they need a more intensive structure of reading support. I'm quite worried, right, if that federal funding doesn't come through and all of a sudden we are gonna have to be really kind of remolding and thinking about how we're gonna do that for kids, because they need it. So that, that is a, that's a real worry, you know, a very big one moving right now.
I think some of this does tie into the budget discussion as well.
Okay. So we'll move on from assessment dyslexia follow-up. Next is superintendent search update, so we had, I'll just do the update, so we had an interview night last, a week ago. Afterwards, the board deliberated for a long session with, with our search consultant. We made the decision not to move forward with a candidate, but to move forward with a interim, or if someone applied for the position in the second go, that we would have a, a superintendent candidate. So, uh, at that time, you had given me the, the authority to negotiate a contract with BSBA to do a second search. So the, this contract would include drafting a new expedited search timeline, refreshing the job posting, and indicated the district is searching for a superintendent or interim superintendent, trying to attract a broader pool of applicants. And what I mean by that is, uh, a superintendent who's recently retired from a, a district who will be retiring at the end of the year and, and may not be ready to, to retire in the hold, but would be open to a, a interim position for one year to help us get through. Or this, we reopen it and we find the, the best candidate for Springfield through the secondary process. It would also include, uh, network recruiting, so outreach to people who have a superintendent's license internally and externally, who may be interested in the position, applying again. It would keep the current search committee active, who would be then charged with going through that application pool, screening the candidate, and then recommending individuals come to the full board, and then we would have them come to the, I guess what I would call a district meeting, read it down. When I talked with the BSBA about the contract to do the next search, we originally paid eight thousand dollars for the initial search. They would be looking for, or, I'm sorry, we paid twelve thousand dollars for the initial search. They would be looking for an eight thousand dollar contract for the secondary search. So I just wanted to bring that to the full board to see if we would entertain a second contract with the BSBA for the search.
I don't see we have many other options.
Yes, I would agree.
I mean, to find it, I guess the nice thing about the BSBA, which is the Vermont School Board Association, so I'm not just speaking in acronyms for people, is that we are a member district, so they offer services to us at a discounted rate. So a search service that we may be charged eight thousand dollars for if we went to a private firm to do it, which some just districts do decide to do, would be two to three times what the, the BSBA is charging to us.
We explored that when we first opened this.
Just generally, website searches, looking at what normal views would be with, with Outlook, nothing more concrete than that.
And this keeps our consultant that.
The BSBA would use the same search consultant unless we chose, said we wanted someone different, but I would.
She's been.
I would say from my experience, because Steve and I did this last time, she is, she is a very capable search consultant.
She will need a motion.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, just made the motion to enter into the BSBA for a second search for eight thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Second any discussion around that. All those in favor?
I.
Okay, next for old business, we had a budget discussion. So I think first we want to start with establishing a possible revote for the community.
Yeah, I, um, talked with Barbara, um, and she's talked with your moderator. Anytime in April is fine, um, I'm kind of targeting May sixth. Institute Tuesday, people are conditioned to vote on Tuesdays. Gives us some time to contemplate the budget, what changes you want to make, if any. I don't know what you are hearing. I'm not hearing anything direct from anybody, but indirectly I'm hearing that it's, you know, wasn't really the money. It was the test scores that we just talked about. It was the student performance. Kinda makes sense to me, um, when you look at our budget compared to the town's budget. Their cost to the taxpayers was ten times what ours. So, um, you know, if somebody is hearing something different or thinks something different, I just need some direction of where you want to go.
Let's start with the May sixth date, because I think that stuff kind of informs our time, so thoughts around May sixth for those revote.
So that means the fifth will be a town meeting, another meeting?
It has to be three days before, right, three or four.
We should hope to, I know you guys hate me.
No one's upset about two.
No, it's just having additional, I know it's challenging.
I would propose that the night before is not the time to do an information session about people going out and vote, voting, because where their late attendance is, is low. I, uh, when we did revotes before, we did it the Thursday before the.
There's a first grade concert on May first.
So we can't win everything, so we're just, we would just have to work around with it. Rick had suggested Saturday mornings as an informational session anyways, which opens up opportunities for people.
Could be going to, could even be like the Monday of, of a week.
There's, there's a timeline associated with it, I think.
Yeah, I think it has to be within five days.
Five days. My only concern is, right.
There's never gonna be a perfect day.
No, there's no.
Nope.
What was that?
There's never gonna be a perfect day.
No, my concern is when do we have to have a budget approved by, and if this goes south?
That was the, June thirty is the operating.
So it still gives us, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like the end of May.
How many times could re, review, re-vote afterwards? So if it goes down on May sixth, you can vote every ten days.
But it's the end of June, it's not the end of May.
You can see we have to vote every seven days.
But again, it's the end of June that we have to have a budget?
We have to have a budget until they want.
If we have it by the end of June, it makes it a lot, when, then we're not paying interest and borrowing money, is that, am I recalling that?
Well, no, you're.
I mean, I'm hoping we pass the budget on the next vote.
Yeah, and really, that answers my question, right? It's not, that that timeline isn't so close to, to May sixth, that was the only reason I was asking, right?
May sixth gives enough time for.
Give us three or four more votes if you have to, if that's your question.
No, that's not my question, um, for absentee ballots. She has enough time to get those out and.
Yeah, I mean, the sooner you warn.
Right.
The vote and the budget, the sooner she can get absentees up.
Okay.
So are we good with May sixth?
Yes, so I guess do we back that up when we need to have a budget warned?
Well, that's why I was trying to establish the May sixth date.
If we go with May sixth.
Backwards from that.
I would say you target your April seventh meeting to have a warrant, but a warrant budget.
Which means it would be in some direction from us to come back with a, we can do it at a separate meeting, it doesn't have to be the April seventh.
You can have additional meetings, if you want, separate meetings.
Because the April seventh meeting, we were gonna dedicate two hours to a governance training from the BSBA. So I would try not to do the budget discussion that same night, so we could warrant a special budget meeting to have a. Just, just plain budget discussion. But do we want to give Rick any direction on what we would like for the next vote?
I mean, I do think.
Because we have to start somewhere, right?
If I, I mean, most of what I hear is student performance. So it's really about acknowledging it, and what are we doing to increase our performance? And, you know, I agree with you, Ray, that so much focus, I think it's easy to focus on, on the standardized testing data, because it's really, really objective, because you're looking at numbers. And, um, I think it's really frustrating.
The problem is it's objectively small.
I agree with you, and there's so much more to a student than that. And I feel like we, we've got to figure out how to, how to explain that going forward. You know, like, first, you know, I, we have students that have very limited skill sets, and their growth may be that they are finally able to draw a straight line. You know, like, and so how do we celebrate all successes when it's so hard to capture that? That's why I think we, we stick on standardized testing. So we, I don't know, like, I don't, I don't, yes, the number is really big. And I, you know, I do hear pushback on that, but I don't know that we could grow or decrease the budget to the point that it would make the people wary of our forty-one million number happy. So I would, I don't know that I would reduce any or all really, or much of the budget, as more of, let's focus on celebrating our successes beyond the numbers that standardized testing are giving us. And what are we doing to help? Like, I think the CBE, like, that video was great, um, I'd love to see that out there, but I, I know it's not a whole lot of guidance.
I think we need guidance around it.
I, I think I'm, I struggle to cut anything, because it was from the administrators. It was already, right, like, there was more that they needed.
Yeah.
I can, right, I, I, I'm sure I, I sound like a broken record, right? We start, when we start talking about performance, I think not only, right, celebrating successes, but it's, we need to be really clear, what are we doing? What are we, right? That interventionist picture was only a piece of it, and I think there's so much more to it that isn't well-known. And it's not clear to anybody in the community what we're actually doing to support these students who need growth, right? We've talked a lot about MTSS and the CBE work and how we're doing it, and, and like I said, that, that's great. But, and I know that's not all we're doing, right? We've got all these different interventionists, we've got these flex, um, blocks that, that people shift around in, that we've heard at some other meetings. And so most importantly to me is, there are students who did not receive foundational skills because of numbers of reasons. And I know the school knows that, so how are we, I think we need to be clear on how we're addressing that and, and show it, right? Like, how, how can we show that? I think it's also important to talk about students who are ahead and how we're supporting them and allowing them to access and continue to be challenged and grow and, um, you know, all the things, the, the trips and all of that. It may also be worthwhile, um, for me, the biggest thing really is, is literacy, right? I, how, I said that earlier, how can you solve a math or a science problem if you can't read it? And so what are we doing to support those kids? How are we helping those kids, um, grow the foundational skills and helping our, our staff help those kids? And I think that also helps behaviors when kids can walk into the cafeteria and read the menu and be able to pick out what they want for lunch. It's something simple like that, but I think all of that needs to be talked about. Long story short, I don't want to cut anything.
Rick, you had mentioned waiting a little bit longer to do a revote, you may have better information coming out of the state.
Yeah.
Or we may have savings coming from different areas that we, a budget formed back in November, December, would be different than a budget that's formed closer to the end of the school year. Do you have any indication of anything surrounding what I just said?
Yes, I'm, um, I'm hoping, and I can try to get into that in the next couple of days, that the, um, yield is going to be increasing, and I know I'm probably placing a lot of people over here now, but as the yield goes up, your tax rate goes down. Based on all of the budgets that did pass across the state. Similar to ours, and I'm just gonna keep beating the drum, they were very favorable to the Ed Fund and was not putting much pressure on the Ed Fund, which should help drive that yield up, which should help drive the tax rate down. That's the main data point that I see coming out of my pillar. And I do think that there's a good chance that that's gonna be in our favor. They're not gonna set that until they walk out the door in June. But start now, we'll start getting weekly updates of what that's gonna look like. But start now, we'll start getting weekly updates of what that's gonna look like. And, you know, I, I, I can get pretty comfortable of what I suggest that I think it's gonna look like. You just approved some contracts tonight that, I don't know, saves two hundred thousand dollars in, you know, capital work.
Yeah.
Um, I could easily use that savings on other stuff, like, you know, around the district cause there's forty million dollars of work that needs to be done. But um, you know, that is clearly a low hanging fruit if you wanna cut something from the budget. You know, for next year. You know, feel more comfortable about where um, oil prices are gonna be now than I did last October. There might be, I don't, I haven't done the analysis, but there might be a couple of dollars of savings there.
Yeah, I mean, uh, my feeling is any savings that we've gotten through a better pricing or negotiation should be passed on to the community.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that's an easy low hanging fruit.
Right.
I think it's no secret, obviously, that I have no problem with the number that we came up with. I did my best to help you guys come up with it. We all know what my argument was. And that I did my best to come up with as many no votes against the budget because of it as I could. Um, what was the, do you, do we know, um, and what the, the difference was in the yes and no votes?
Eighty-sixty-seven, I have.
Seventy-three.
Oh, yeah, so. Here's the thing. Most, I, I, I will grant that most of the people who voted no were not voting no because of the reason that I voted no. Most of them were voting no because test scores. And because for some reason, that escapes me, they think that somehow less money is going to equal better test scores. This does not compute, which means you are dealing with cognitive dissonance. Which means it doesn't matter what you say to them, those people are not going to be reached. Because when you're dealing with cognitive dissonance, no matter how many facts or how much evidence you present to them, they're just going to become buried even further into their false beliefs. The people that I convinced to vote no can be, have their minds objectively changed. I'm just going to leave you with that, cause I have to go pick my.
Thanks, Rick.
Uh, Eric Schubert also had to spend.
Can I just?
She can go if she wants. She has something?
No.
All right. I really like Rick's surprise two hundred thousand dollar savings. And the big question I obviously have is where do you get more? So if that was that simple in the course of failed budgets and now we're looking at a potential just out of the blue two hundred dollars in renegotiated savings for, I'm gonna guess the same things, there's gotta be more to be had. And I guess that's kind of the point that we were working on, on the budget committee altogether is where are there advantages to be found? And Denise's comment about the, uh, the performance, I think they're, they're spot on. Student performance is one thing. Um, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, it is a system of measure that we currently have and that is what it is. And I think it's beyond that, though, when you talk to folks. People don't have a lot of good to say about it just generally, whether it's the environment or behavior issues or whatever the thing is. So I think there's a combination of things at play here that are, that are beyond the scope of just getting the magic number. Cause back to Ray's point, the number may be right, but is the money being spent in the right place? So do we need to do all these um, other things? And, and you know, it's not a question of judgment on anybody in an administrative role, but is it a need or a want? And is the need aligned with the common goal of the district to provide quality student outcomes? I think that just needs to be the root of all of these decisions. There's, there's no way to get around the fact that the budget is huge. But is, is it being put in the right buckets? And I think that was one of the most frustrating pieces of being on the budget committee. It was also one of the most eye-opening pieces is that there's no clear answer. It's like, oh, just in this lump bucket with an account name that you don't even know what it really actually is for. So, you know, ten grand for this, ten grand for that. It's like that, that all, all stuff adds up and it's really necessary. So I really advise anybody that's gonna be looking at stuff to sharpen their pencil because putting a budget number back out to the voting public, that's like the same thing or a couple of bucks less is almost insulting. It's like, we, yeah, we know it failed, we didn't really reduce it much or, or try to make a point about what we're gonna do with this. But uh, here it is again, and it is what it is. I think Denise's messaging on, on getting out and saying, we're, we're, we're trying, is gonna have to go with that because I don't, I don't see how it's gonna be successful. I mean, I know the, the, the difference was much less than last year. But still, it's enough to be of a concern. There's people concerned about the, the school district and its health. And we aren't really willing to spend the money on it if, if they don't see anything improving.
Thank you.
Just.
I just wanted to, I think we, I don't know if we stated this in the last meeting, but about the transition. And I think we did, I think Nate had asked us to, and I just want her again to stay. That transition, I think, would be more harmful to pull back.
We already voted on it.
Right. I couldn't remember if we did, and I just wanted to make sure.
Entire board voted on to continue the transition. And unanimously approved that we would continue the transition.
I just wanted to make sure that that was stated. That was it.
Before I get thrown under the bus in the minutes. When I said, when I said two, when I said two hundred thousand, I was throwing that in my head. I just did the math, it's ninety-five.
Ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, those two candidates saved ninety-five thousand.
Starting to think of some more.
But that's your, if that's your directive, we'll do that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
One of the things that came up in a couple of years, the process was a survey. I know you can't really ask people why they voted a certain way, but perhaps the thought process in voting. And because no matter what you cut, right? You, you could produce a thirty million dollar budget and people are still upset because of cultural issues, then you don't have other things to change. So I think the survey, however you word the question of why it wasn't passed is, uh, you know, something to, to bait. But when you have cultural issues like a mother coming into a board event meeting crying, spilling her family's dirty laundry because she can't get an email back, does it really take the CFO to look into why a mother is not getting an email? Or you have a father coming to a board event meeting because his son was not getting the required minutes every week on his I U P and nobody told him? Right, these are simple fixes that are instant, uh, fixers, top-down, right? Instant fixes that I think will bring a lot of faith back into people. Uh, you know, and I think the infographic that we put out was good, but I think a lot of people still see that forty-two million and they're like, ah, that's all Springfield money. But in reality, it isn't. So I think the survey would be really beneficial, uh, because you can then, you're not just taking a shot in the dark. This, I don't see it as cutting money, I think it's more responsibly funded, uh, right? But the one-on-one technology program, that was one small area that the studio's budget committee got to look into. We've got the savings and we're still getting the same progress. So I don't see it as necessarily cutting, but maybe more fiscally responsible in the money that we are spending. And, and dealing. So I think, you know, a lot of faith could be put back in the district with improved communication, improved transparency, like, you know, this whole superintendent search. I, I have a lot of questions about hiding, hiding open public meeting law, right? But why hasn't anything been said about what happened to the first candidate? Why hasn't, and why hasn't the committee come forward? You know, the law for public meetings says it shall make the reasons for their decision public at people in the meeting. Our committee didn't come forward and given a, a report on why they made those decisions. So the law says, that's the law they hid behind for why they did everything in executive session. Right, so I think there's a, a lack of transparency, a lack of communication, and a lack of faith. Those are all super quick fixes that could really improve the overall whole. And people get away from the number and it's flat, our district is trying to make vast improvements, but support them with this budget. Just that, I see.
Yeah, there's, there was a lot of good commentary in that. And then just something around the superintendent search, parts that I can answer that I think is important. When, when you interview somebody, um, they're applying for a job they want, right? So we may be interviewing a principal at a high school three districts away. They may not want their staff to know that they're looking to advance their career and move elsewhere. So that, that interview has to take place in an executive session because you would lose your, as a leader, you would lose a lot of your staff because they know you're trying to leave. So that's why, why that's done in executive session as well as we're at, in interviews, you ask people what their biggest weakness is or criticism. And, and if you're doing that in open session, everybody, everybody knows now, especially if you're a principal in a district. I, my understanding of the statute that you referenced with the superintendent search portion is that the, the board, when we decide to hire somebody, would give the reasoning as to why we decided to hire the, the person we did, not the search committee. The search committees establishing the person can get a superintendent's license, is qualified for the job, has the right credentials, knows the educational background. It's the board that makes the final decision, not the, the search committee. So the, that comes to us to make those, that final decision. And if we had appointed somebody, we would have given the reasoning why and why we thought that was a good candidate for the district. I just, I, I don't wanna hide, hide it because there's. Yeah. Back, back to the.
I think there were some other good points too that I think would be important that we could tie into when we build out these next budget presentations.
Yeah, yeah, I, I like the survey idea. I don't know if we can pu- pull that off. I like the commentary that you brought up at the start. I mean, there's some really good ideas in that. But I, I, I think the, what are we looking for a number from Rick and what the? I mean, ninety-five thousand dollars is not a lot of savings. Come back with something more than that.
Why?
Why?
Before all that, before all that, everyone was saying it wasn't about money.
I think, I think there's the.
I don't care, you tell me to cut a million dollars.
I said it, I said it last year when we were re-voting and we put the same one out. It, it, in some respects, I, I think to the people who voted no, it's a little insulting that you put the same number back out again.
But that one passed.
Not the second time.
And you gotta remember too, the small number of people who voted last time. It was only a little over a thousand people voting out of nine thousand.
We were a majority, I'm not.
You know, so I think that a lot, a lot, that had a lot to do with it too. I think a lot of, you know, a lot of people just didn't vote, whatever reason that be, if they liked it or not. But the idea is just get, get the people out. Cause every time, every time we do a re-vote, it costs us money. People don't understand that. I, I sort of agree with you, let's, if the number's the same, but let's, let's allocate differently or see what we can do to make it better for what, what we got.
Maybe be a little more open about how we're spending.
Right.
Some of this and how we're supporting these students.
I mean, there's other savings to be had in the numbers we have, right? Besides the ninety-five thousand dollars from the.
Like, look at the oil. I mean, you know, I, I forecasted, you know, four dollars a gallon back in October, you know? Right now, I don't know, last time I looked at barrel oil, it was sixty-five bucks a gallon. And we put this in somewhere around probably two seventy-five a gallon. I don't know what, I mean, I mean, you, you know, you've got the, you know, the yield that's gonna come in. And I'm, I know I sound like a broken record. You can do all the outreach, you can do, you know, you can, you can do a survey, you can do all the stuff you wanna do. Ninety percent of the people aren't gonna pay any attention till they walk in that ballot and they see forty million dollars, ed spending, pre-plays, people or whatever it says these days, thirteen-nine, which is an increase of three percent. That's what they see, that's what they're voting, that's what they're reacting to.
Yeah, and your yield number.
The yield doesn't mean any of that stuff.
It'll change how much we pay in property tax, but it won't change the number of ballots.
It won't change that language. And that's all they see is that language. Ninety percent of people. Okay, I, I've been doing this for too long. People say, well, you gotta do better outreach, you gotta do better outreach. I reached out to many people.
I would say, I, I had a lot of comments that how much better the mailer we had this year was, was better than previous years. So I, I, I don't know if we would have time to do that again, but I, I think the responses to that was positive.
And one of the big things I heard was, um, that they finally understood what we were doing to improve student outcomes. Like, we finally took the language from, we're gonna do this curriculum or that curriculum. We brought it down to, you know, we're sending students on trips. That's a really, really, really exciting thing for a lot of people because they, the people that are into travel understand the depth of education that can come from the trip. But, you know, like, we're talking about return to hands-on learning and play-based learning at the really early years, people can understand that. So when we say, what are we doing? We need like, people wanna be able to imagine we're building houses out of unifix cubes to learn that one and one is two. Um, so that, I mean, like, that was really something that, they loved the mailer. And then on top of it, it was like, they could understand what we're doing. Um, so I think like, being able to better bring it down.
I mean, I can see the benefits of that curriculum that we're trying to implement across the districts. I have a presentation in the video, we're great.
Yeah.
See it with the, the one student saying they wanna be powerful by leveling up. I mean, there's.
Yeah, that's huge.
Something to that.
Yeah, the numbers guide me. If you look at that presentation, I said this, uh, on the A C Arena, you know, when she showed it to me last week. I'm an investment guy and return on investment. To me, I mean, we've been doing um, in-house pre-K now for three years. I think those numbers, or some part of those numbers showed to me that we're just starting to see that now in kindergarten, first grade.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're truly not, our plan is we're truly not gonna be fully implemented in our foundational primary education system for I think another three years. We're not gonna, we're not gonna expand next year cause we thought it would be too complicated with everything else that was on the plate. So then the year after that, we're gonna add a grade, and the year after that, we're gonna add. That's the plan, to have five, and a third one, cause we only currently only have two, I think, two, two grades. And then it's gonna take thirteen years to matriculate that to it. And now we are doing targeting, you know, seventh and eighth grader doing some great things. We can see specific patterns. But, you know, people need to understand that this is a long-term investment. And I think that early investments in those primary grades are showing signs of success.
I also wanted to add, we're also seeing, we're doing earlier interventions. We're identifying, um, whether it's a diagnosed disability or a cognitive disability. We're all, we're seeing those earlier. We're putting interventions in place and like, like Richard said, we're not, we're not gonna see those for years to come. Um, we're reducing the rate of kid, of students that are actually ending, you know, going on to an I E P or to an E S T process or a five oh four. Although five oh fours medically sometimes necessitate a five oh four. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna see that reduction identifying earlier and sending kids on a path that's gonna lead them to more success because we're identifying, we're putting those interventions, interventions in early. Uh, I think that speaks a lot, like Richard said, to our growth from winter. Richard said, to our growth from winter, um, winter to now for our KU. We saw the, the most growth in that because we're seeing the benefits, um, from when this was implemented back in 2018. So now we're able to see for, especially our first and second grade, we're landing where we need to be. We just need to see this through.
Yeah, and it, so we can't just talk about that. It also has, we have students who did not get those foundational skills because we didn't have it. And what are we doing to support those? And that's the big piece. When we build this, I think it's got to be both. It's, it's not just CBE, which is huge and great and absolutely seeing awesome, but, um, it's got to be both. Do you know what you're doing? How about? Three, two and a half, 250 to 500 reduced. I, I'm just throwing out a number, because I feel like we can't go up with the same number. But on the other hand, cutting and cutting and cutting isn't going to improve student success. So, I don't know. I'm just throwing out a number so we can start wrapping this up.
I mean, Eric's had his hand up for a while. Was, did you have anything else, Eric?
Yeah, I just, I, a couple of comments and, uh, and a question. Um, I was, I was going to poke at Rick and ask him if, uh, if his accounting system had a bug that the developer said was going to take three years to fix, would you still be using that accounting system? And that felt like the, uh, the three years extra it's going to take to roll out the rest of this curriculum. We don't have three years. We need to do it now. There are kids, I would imagine, that are juniors in high school that are never going to benefit from that, that are going to leave the district, um, not as good as it could be. Um, it's great for the younger ones, and it's important to catch there, but, you know, we got to, we got to do it equal opportunity for everybody, not equal outcome, equal opportunity. And I think that's a, that's one of the key components to that. I mean, I know that if I, um, have an issue like that with, you know, my analogy, some piece of software, that would be the last, I'd be done with that piece of software. It'd be over. So the other thing I was going to ask is more of a specific, um, definitely, we have an active polling, um, after a budget vote, to see why people voted the way they did. Um, it could be a multiple choice thing. It could be a open-ended thing, um, just to see, you know, if they're willing to say yes, they, they voted yes or no. Why? Um, right there at the poll, and, or if they didn't vote at all, they didn't, they didn't say yes or no. Like, I think there's probably some of that as well. They don't know what's in the numbers. They don't do it. But I think Denise is right on the money. Um, highlight, it's not necessary, you know, and again, I go back to, it's not necessarily reducing the number. I think there has to be as a nod to the fact that it's expensive, but it has to be an allocation of the number. So when we look at it from a financial system perspective, we see, like, direct education, direct instruction. That doesn't mean anything to Joe Schwellen in the street. I know what it means, but I bet people on this call know what it means. The challenge is, what does that actually mean in terms of the product that's being produced? There are a bunch of fluff in there, and I think it's really putting buckets around that and categorizing it. I think the, uh, the mailer did, did a good start at making that a little more clear. But that's got to be part of this, this solution. Um, and the, the last thing I'll say is, the superintendent is, the person that comes in and takes this role has to be an absolute rock star. There is just no room for error. We cannot be picking around with people who are looking for other things. The person, um, who was coming from a nearby district is, is gone from that job. So we need people that, one, we need somebody who's going to sniff those problems out before they are problems. And two, we need, um, the, the, the biggest, most epic turnaround artist that you can get that's not afraid to shake the cart. It just has to happen. That's the last comment I'm going to make on the superintendent thing for now.
Thanks.
Number.
Yeah, thanks for recognizing me. Whatever number, the number is not important. So we, if you, if you do 250,000, it's not the number, it's what is being cut. So you got to, and, and I think Eric said that with an allocation. So this is what we're not going to have if you approve this budget with a $250,000 cut. Instead, you got to give people a reason to vote for the budget, revise, on a revised budget. And I think, you know, Rick's reference to return on investments is good, that people, yes, it's going to be three years or more, but you got to give people a reason to vote, and you got to talk to them. So, you know, at the, at the budget meeting and before, you got to get, you got to explain, you got to tell people that what the need is and how this budget addresses the needs. And it's got to be less than what you're supposed to feed it, because like you said, uh, it would be did something go back out of the same. But give them a specific, you know, we're going to cut a part-time lab fee to $50,000. We're going to save money on fuel, you know, $100,000. We're going to save money on construction projects, 95,000. You itemize that to justify what's coming out. It's different than what it was when you put the original budget on. And, you know, I think, I think people are discounting the voters a little bit too much. I think people want to vote for a budget, but you got to give them a reason to do it.
Thank you.
Give them a reason to support our schools and support our kids and give them those.
I still don't feel like we should give Rick any direction.
We haven't. I just, so I know we have, whatever we're calling it, the $800,000, right? That was approved, yes. So if we start cutting stuff out, whatever positions, however we want to do it, we have that to fill gaps. Okay. Um, I have concerns with that, because I know, like you say, we can't always keep relying on that, and I don't want people to get comfortable with us rolling out lower and lower budgets when we're not able to get the results that they think we should be having. Um, but I, I, I hesitate to cut too much because I, I, I feel like there's always that group that votes no, which we understand. Um, we'll do better, saying that with authority. We'll do better about communicating this time around. Um, but I really think any more than 250 is just too much. I, we have, it's so lean as it is now, I really struggle to, um, you know, take out anything more than what you've already found for potential savings. And so-
I would say the one thing I thought the town did better than we did at town meeting days, they had a slide where they had their original budget, what it would cost a homeowner, and then they had another column that was what it would cost the homeowner when they applied their surplus to the current, the next fiscal year. I think we need that same slide with our current budget, with the $800,000 from the reserve fund applied to the tax rate, and show the voters what that means. I know that portion's already been applied, but we can't apply that until the, the yield set by the state. So I think that would be an interesting graphic to show people, because that is going to buy down the, the rate.
I feel like as, I don't know, I'm like reading into your yields information, I feel like in the end, I mean, maybe this is a really big reach and be really big. We're probably looking at no real tax impact, because even as our budget was, it was, what, 1849 on a $200,000 home?
Because I don't think you can discount what Larry said. You have to tell people what they're voting for.
Right.
I know we told them what Springfield was paying, but we didn't necessarily tell them what they were voting for.
Right. I think the only thing I would, I don't want to just say, cut 250, if it means that we're not going to be able to, to educate our kids. You know, I, I guess-
Yeah, but if the budget keeps going down, we got to operate on it. 85%, is it?
That's what you can borrow.
That's what we can borrow.
To find that. So you can only borrow 85% if you can operate it the way you want to operate it.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
You're just going deficit.
You're going to debt more. So, I mean, that's, that's-
Not ideal, but-
It's a catch 22.
It is.
Can the guy do sweet weight? Easy $800,000.
That's not a good budget. So it's capital, that's in the capital.
It's what you have to find. Still operating.
I will, I'm going to.
I, I think you can come back to us with a tightened-up budget. I don't know what that number is, but I think there's, between the oil, the construction benefits and other things, I think us just giving you a number to slash it down by is not the best way to do it. It's for you guys to look at it and say, where else is there a little fat we can trim out of this? And there may be none.
There, there's no fat. There's, you know, the 95 is, you know, somebody said it earlier, that, you know, miraculously, I was going out to bed, getting beds, doing, evaluating the beds, and it was a lot of work to find that $95,000. Fortunately, we did, you know, we, you know, we, you know, I, I work hard to create a competitive environment so that I get good bits. Um, you know, and that's what we did. But, uh, you know, I can, I can go through that, but, uh, you know, I'm hearing people saying we need to do more for other kids, not just our primary kids. I'm hearing, okay, I got to increase the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's the reality. We want to, you know, we want, people want increased performance. That's what we got to do.
I can clearly come back with the 95, and I'll clearly come back with some savings on oil, because I feel confident that I can get, I can buy oil at a less, you know, a less price than I forecasted back in October. But can I find other things? You're pretty tight. You're pretty tight. Everybody, everybody thinks there's this, you know, fluff and slush money floating around. That stuff left public education back in the 90s.
No, the only thing we would have is hiring people where we would know that where they fit on our pay scale.
You know, every, every year, it's, every year it's tight. And, you know, as it is, we didn't, I'm going to lose track now for the, you know, we kept 10 or 15 paras out of a budget just because we can't find them. But if we could find them-
We could use them.
We could use them, you know, so, um, but I'll, you know, I'll do whatever you're telling me to do. We don't have to.
If we need a consensus, then-
If you want to leave at my lap, I'll bring you back a number.
Yeah.
The consensus, don't leave it at his lap.
Yeah.
I'll take the heat out here.
He's the expert.
Oh, yeah.
We're having a separate budget meeting, not-
I would propose a separate budget meeting, not on the 7th. We'll have to figure out night meetings, but based on-
Well, I think you're going to need one-
Prior to that.
Sooner rather than later.
So you would, I would say, come back with some, what do you think you would be ready tomorrow, and then I, we can, I can see our availability.
What about, what about the 26th?
I'll be out of town. I have airplane tickets.
Why aren't we on the first?
I need to pull, I need to pull at least a quorum together for the honor.
For the 26th?
Yeah.
It would just be, you'd have a quorum, because Steve is going to be here.
Yeah, I can tell him.
Yeah. We can do the 26th.
I mean, it won't be the final one, but it, it'll be at least, it'll be a start for the conversation.
You'll get a packet in advance, so-
Right. Yeah, and I think, I think the 26th, I'm not even available at that time.
You're not.
Okay. I have an important date.
I know. No, you don't. You can do it a different day. I'm just saying, I got to.
No, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. We've got a lot of meetings coming up. Uh, 26th is, so more budget discussions on the 26th, the 6th.
I mean, frankly, I don't think it's going to be long. I mean, I'm just going to show you what-
Yep, 6:30.
You're either going to like it or you're not going to like it.
Or later. No, you've-
Be at Union.
7:30 at Union Street. Okay. Yep, okay. All right, 7:30 at Union. You'll come with something. And that means our next regular meeting was, is April 7th, but we're going to dedicate two hours of that for governance training from the BSBA, where they provide it for free. They're going to come in and step through a training somewhere with us for two hours.
Still starting at 6:30?
Still starting at 6:30. I think there is something else. Yeah, government's turned down straight. They suggested it, it, doing the training in someplace you don't hold your regular meetings, because it-
21st.
26th, we would have a special budget meeting at Union Street at 7:30 a.m. Yep. And April 21st, we have a meeting, and we have an executive session tonight for contracts. That'll be brief. So I need a motion to adjourn to go into exec, executive session for contracts with Rick. Yeah, just you. Steve made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
He seconded any further discussion?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.